Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the May 18th, 2021, regular Board meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. If you would all rise as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance. Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. We have before us an agenda. Is there any necessary changes?
No recommended changes.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Tom. Second by Lindsey. All in favor? That is unanimous. First off tonight, we have recognitions with Employee of the Month by Dr. Cindy Salome.
It is with pleasure that I get to tell you about our Employee of the Month, and I'll also want to tell you that Jim and Nix is, again, a proud sponsor of the Employee of the Month. It is from the Transportation Department this month, and it is Pam Gilbert. She has worked in our system for 28 years. She was hired in 1993 as a bus driver and promoted to Field Coordinator in 2011. I'd like to read a few of the comments.
Can you tell us who is speaking? I can't tell who is speaking. Raise your hand if you can.
You want me to go ahead? I'm Cindy Salome, Associate Superintendent for Human Resources and Legal Services. Pam Gilbert goes above and beyond for her team with a smile always. She ensures she has contact with all drivers in the district to enhance their work experience. She is consistent with praise for drivers who consistently exhibit the skills and dedication required of Forsyth County transportation drivers. I have watched her work endlessly to ensure everything runs right and the students are safe. Very kind, patient, instructive, does not make the job of bus driver any harder than it has to be. Pam is respectful and patient in her daily interaction with others. Everyone on our team respects and supports her. Her reputation transcends the team into other districts. Thank you, and congratulations to Pam Gilbert, Employee of the Month.
Congratulations to Ms. Gilbert. I know I've had to call her before, and she's been very helpful, so well deserved. Next up, we have the consent agenda. There's several items on there. Does anybody have any questions, concerns? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Tom, a second by Darla. Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous. Next up, we have public participation. This evening, we have 22 speakers signed up. I'm going to read a little bit of our public participation policy, BCBI, which was in the back of the room. I'm just going to read some of the highlights because it is a rather lengthy policy.
Kristen. Yes, I can understand you.
Tonight, we have 22 speakers signed up. We ask that you please keep your comments to no more than three minutes, given the number of speakers this evening. We will hold up a yellow card to let you know we have 30 seconds, and then a red card when your time is up. A sound will also be played when your time is up. When you hear your time is up, please complete your sentence. All speakers shall address the Board by first stating their names. All remarks shall be made to the Board as a body and addressed through the chair. Remarks shall not be addressed to individual Board members. Speakers may bring printed material and other supporting materials. These materials should be given to the Clerk of the Board, Suzy at the end. Speakers are asked to keep their remarks civils. Profane, rude, defamatory remarks and personal attacks will not be allowed. The Board will not respond to questions or comments made by the speaker during public participation unless we choose to ask questions. Speakers should remain at the microphone while answering any questions that are asked. Our first speaker tonight is Eddie Solley. If you could come up.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Bearden, for giving me this opportunity to speak. Originally, I expected discussion around videos I saw on Brain Pop, specifically the Black Lives Matter video. I want to briefly say, an organization that would produce such a tilted propaganda as that video, it's not something that should be filtered or monitored. The contract with Brain Pop should be canceled immediately. We got to this point because the people put in charge of making these decisions did not make good, sound decisions. I've seen other concerned parents being told Forsyth does not teach critical race theory to students, and since there was nothing for them to be concerned about, they were asked if they still want to speak to the Board. Time and time again, we were told, there's nothing being taught, there's nothing being taught to students. One director in particular emailed several people back and forth insisting nothing was being taught to students on critical race theory. And once I was able to sign up, I spoke with the same director as everyone else had spoken with. She spent several minutes with me trying to convince me that critical race theory was not being taught in our schools, and there was no reason for me to speak to you today. I told her that I would still like to speak with the Board. She again tried to convince me that I did not need to speak with you, and they were already addressing the Brain Pop video and that they would be monitoring it closely. I told her that I still had concerns about who would be in charge of the monitoring of these videos and who would be filtering the pervasive material. There's a lot of pervasive material out there for our kids. For example, I'm going to read you 10 titles. Me and White Supremacy, White Fragility, Stamped From the Beginning, A Definitive History of Racist Ideas in America, Lies My Teacher Told Me, Dying of Whiteness, How to Be Anti-Racist, The New Jim Crow, The Gendered Brain, What Works Gender Equality by Design, Culturally Responsive Teaching and the Brain. Even though these books can be found as recommended reading from the pages of Critical Race Theory, The 1619 Project, and Marxist Advocates alike, this list is taken directly from the Forsyth County Schools Director of Communication and Community Engagement's Twitter page, shared under the hashtag ForsythPlanAsSuggestedSummerReadingToGetReadyForDiversityEquityInInclusion in Forsyth County. Some members of the Board may recognize that hashtag. It is the hashtag that Forsyth County Schools uses to spread information on training and continuing education for teachers. Teachers post pictures of students' work and continue education at upcoming events. Diversity Education, and even you, Mr. Bearden, you've posted over 30 times in that hashtag. That same director called my cellphone yesterday from her office line to confront me for following her Twitter page because she didn't like the fact that she thought I was pulling this information from her page. Is it Forsyth County policy to let administrators use records to harass concerned parents? Do you condone her calling me from her office line to try and discourage me from speaking at this meeting? Should everyone else who speaks be concerned that they're going to hear from this director?
Thank you, Mr. Solley. Your time is up. Next speaker is Kendall Cameron.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. My name is Kendall Cameron. I reside in the southern part of the county. My daughter is a freshman at Lambert High School. We moved from Cobb County because we wanted to find the absolute best school system in the state of Georgia, and we found it here in Forsyth County. One of our criteria was to have an incredibly diverse school system because the reality of the world today is my child didn't need to go to a school where everyone looked just like her. We're very proud that our child participates in a learning community of diversity. Now, based on your own DEI plan, I'm very well aware that CRT has not been formally made part of the curriculum. However, resources are being provided to teachers, to integrate it into lesson planning, and to students, as Brain Pop, as Ed mentioned. Let's be clear. If you're advocating or allowing the teaching of CRT, a concept grounded in ideology and not real scholarship, you are by the definition that has been accepted by the academy for over a century promoting racism. CRT promotes the concept that people are defined by immutable characteristics. The Civil Rights Movement went out of their way. People died to get out of this concept that people are defined by immutable characteristics like race. If you have materials that you're providing where it says if you were born a white male, you were born an oppressor, you are abusing our children. You are stripping our children's sense of agency and ability to learn and grow, to acquire a sense of self that doesn't include crippling guilt for things that they did not participate in and know very little about. The world is in far greater need of doctors and engineers than it is in activists. What's going to happen when the baby boomers start to retire, as they all already? We don't have enough doctors and engineers. The blame is going to lie at the feet of the public school system. Our priorities should be educating our children in STEM and preparing the next wave. We do an incredible job in Forsyth County. If you look at the performance of our diverse students in Forsyth County, many of whom are immigrants, many of whom, English is not their first language, their parents, it's not their first language, their performance is outstanding. We shouldn't be apologizing or looking for a problem in need of a solution. We don't have a problem. We have the example. That doesn't mean there isn't racism. By God, there is, and we ought to fight like hell to make sure it's eliminated, and I will stand with anyone. My brother, a Democrat over here, I'll stand with you every day when you see it, and you know that. If you remain committed to a path and include CRT resources and poisoning our children against each other, then I'm going to ask you of this: Continue to set the example of leadership that this Board and the Boards that have come before it have set to make us the excellent county we are. If you're committed to this path and won't remove these resources, then I'll let the five members of this Board, all of whom are Caucasian, all of whom ran for this office, campaigned for this office, paid to campaign for this office, and won on merit, to excuse themselves for a few minutes to decide which one of you is going to step down from a position you earned in the interest of equity of outcome.
Mr. Cameron.
And if you're committed to equity of outcome, set the example before you ask our children to do it.
Thank you, Mr. The next speaker is Joanna Wegner. We ask that you do not applause, please. This is not what we're here for.
Good evening, valued Board members. The work you do and the positions you hold are important and valuable to the students and the parents of Forsyth County schools. I appreciate the time you've given me to listen to my concerns. I emailed Ms. Abbott requesting time with this Board based on my concerns that the DEI plan being implemented in our schools is nothing more than critical theory. I received a response that it is not. However, in reviewing the DEI plan, I found many definitions, goals, and strategies in the plan which are based in the tenets of critical theory. Critical theory is rooted in Marxism, which is a consistently failed system. Critical theory teaches unequal outcomes are never due to individual behavior, but manipulation of unjust systems, institutions, and policies by those who hold power. It teaches reality is about power, and who holds power and who does not hold power, and it can be mapped through intersectionalities of race, gender, sexual orientation, gender identities, and others. The list goes on. It teaches that the powerless and the oppressed have greater insight and greater moral authority to see reality, and the oppressors are blind to the reality and have nothing to offer. Under the heading of diversity, the county wants to offer diverse learning styles, which is mapped to the critical theory of subjective experience, which calls for the teaching of each student according to their learning style. This generally involves pigeonholing students based on concepts from popular psychology, as opposed to teaching everyone the same way. Forsyth County already has an excellent special needs program and a gifted program defined for unique students. Under the heading of equity, the county calls for removing systemic barriers. Critical theory teaches that power structures such as society are viewed as systems of control. Under Goal One, under the heading of Student Engagement and Learning, it repeatedly calls for culturally relevant curriculum teachings and strategy. The basis of critical theory is that it isn't possible to evaluate other cultures from an objective perspective, and there are no universal truths to which to evaluate other cultures. Goal Area One calls for the identification of underrepresented students but fails to define who the underrepresented students are. It includes a discipline matrix for monitoring of disproportionality of suspensions and expulsions from student subgroups. This is based in critical theory of agency, again, holding the view that students are hapless victims of systems created by the oppressive force of the elite, and removes the personal accountability and personal responsibility by the students for their actions. In Goal Area Two, Staff Capacity calls for the recruitment of underrepresented staff. The EEOC states it's illegal to ask questions such as, what is your race? What is your nationality? What religion are you? And yet, these questions must be asked or assumed during the interview process to meet this goal. I ask that the county, again, tell Forsyth County parents how they are not promoting teaching and exacting critical theory in our schools. I ask the Board for clear definitions, metrics, and measurements, and I ask the Board who holds the head of this program accountable and who reviews, listens, and reads these materials. I ask the Board to explain in written response, and I again thank you for your time.
Thank you to the Board for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Danielle Reniman, and I've been a resident of Forsyth County for 16-plus years. I'm a retired registered nurse who spent most of my working days at the ICU at Northside Forsyth. My husband of 20 years and I are small business owners in the county, and together we have five children whom I've had the blessed opportunity to homeschool. One of my fervent prayers is for those who would love to teach their children, but for whatever reason, they cannot. It is for them, and for the fact that we do not exist in a bubble, and the choices we make in society affect the whole, that I am here to speak tonight. My children will most certainly be affected by the choices this education system makes. I will keep this simple and extremely straightforward. Your strategic plan, called DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion, will fail for one very, very specific reason: God is not in it. We, as a nation, have allowed our Judeo-Christian foundation to be ever so slowly ripped right from under us, and it is past time to put it back. You, as a Board, obviously do not understand the scope of your problem regarding DEI, aka Critical Race Theory. It is bigger than you know, and this problem will not go away until it is condemned and removed. I evidence the above in three ways: The form letter many of us have received in regards to speaking tonight; the lack of the very fact that this hot topic was not on your scheduled agenda for tonight; and the fact that every person I have spoke with are appalled at the scope of diversity your strategic plan refers to. Let me publicly read them quickly, since my time is limited. Abilities and Disabilities, Culture, Gender, Gender Identity, Language, Military, Veteran Status, Parental and Family Status, Political Beliefs, Religion, Age, Education, Geography, Learning Styles, Nationality, Personality, Race, Sexual Orientation, Appearance, Ethnicity, Income, Life Experiences, Occupation, Philosophy, Relationship Status, and Values. Have I left anything out? Because I don't believe that I have. Your scope touches every aspect of life, and I believe it is a foundational attempt to govern heart condition. And by that, I mean the personal responsibility to respond to good and evil. I'm not going to finish because my time is limited, but the Declaration of Independence said, "We hold these truths to be self-evident. It's written on our hearts." That all men, all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That is a freedom afforded to us all, and much blood has been spilled fighting for it. Thank you.
Next up, we have Heidi Elsrode. I'm not sure how to pronounce your name, so if you could...
I'm sorry?
Not sure how to pronounce your name properly, so if you could...
Elsa Road.
Elsa Road. All right, thank you.
He came with the name. Good evening. Thank you for being here. I trust that you, like myself and others, are here to listen and to learn. Yes, there are lots of hot button topics to be addressed, obviously, and we're not done yet, but please know that there are parents, and grandparents, and teachers, and staff members, and voters. We're all here to work together to ensure that the students of Forsyth County continue to receive the superior education that has become the envy of so many throughout the state. It's my prayer that hearts may be softened and ears may be open to hear the sincerity in the concerns that are brought before you, that all gathered here will pause to consider the tremendous opportunity we share. You have been entrusted with our most precious treasures. It would be a shame to do anything less than strive to strengthen the ties that bind this county together. We can, we will, and we must move forward with empathy, clarity, and determination as we tackle the issues at hand. As we move forward, may God flood this meeting with His peace and give us calm and patience. With that said, as a high school English teacher of almost 20 years, most of them spent in this county, I can honestly say that what I see unfolding in front of me saddens me deeply. I can't understand why the County Board of Education is going to such lengths to incorporate the clearly divisive and hurtful ideology of social, emotional learning and critical race theory. It's our children's lives. This isn't just something on paper. Even more, I'm deeply saddened that the sixth-largest school district in the state, the one that loudly and proudly professes quality learning and superior performance for all, is going to such lengths to distract, excuse me, to distance themselves from any and all things CRT. And yet, there it is, in all its CRT glory, smack dab on the county page, the strategic plan for everybody to see. You cannot deny what is so loudly and proudly embraced. First, I want to know specifically, what was the trigger point that prompted a recommendation for the county to hire a DEI specialist in the first place? Why was the current DEI specialist selected over another candidate? The specialist works in tandem with the Director of Communications, and when they work together, they're engaging and creating the strategic plan. When do the stakeholders get to become engaged? What products have these two produced for public consumption? Their findings and opinions are impacting county strategic plans, so it only makes sense that such important decisions made readily available to the public. Where can we find this? When can it be shared, not just as an educator but as a parent? And I respectfully ask that you respond to my comments and concerns in writing. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Mr. Charles Warren.
Charles Warren.
Charles. I'm sorry, did I? I'm sorry.
Good evening, and all.
We'll come back. Go ahead.
My name is Charles Warren. I'm a retired professional engineer and a retired doctor of theology. And so, what I've come to talk about is a possible policy that I would like for you to adopt. So, as you all well know, the Georgia State Board of Education has adopted a framework for K-12 education and benchmarks for science literacy, and therefore, the Georgia Science Standards of Excellence adheres to the science standards documented in those two documents. So, together, these three documents teach origin science, and origin science answers two focal questions: Where and how did the universe come into existence? And they provide the answer by the Big Bang Singularity. And the next question is, where and how did life come into existence? And they provide the answer by natural processes called evolution. Both of these questions have been declared by the Supreme Court of the United States to be religious questions. Therefore, by law, both questions must be treated with religious neutrality. But by the end of 12th grade, students have been taught directly or implicitly that the universe and all therein came into being by natural causes only, and therefore, by implication, the supernatural is nonexistent. Humans are merely higher-evolved animals resulting from random genetic changes and natural selection, and therefore, by implication, the human soul is nonexistent. We're all atoms. So, as a result, our culture today is markedly more evil and lawless than at any time since the 1950s. And I think there are two primary causes for that, and the number one cause is the K-12 authoritative teaching of the theory of evolution as a fact of nature. And the second is the establishment of humanism as the nation's national religion. So, I would ask the Board to please create and adopt a policy that will ensure that all science instructions are religiously neutral, scientifically based, and scientifically accurate, focused on advancing scientific knowledge rather than to perpetuate the modern synthesis theory of evolution.
Thank you, Dr. Warren.
And I gave a packet to each of you.
Yes, thank you.
And there is a sample policy that I'd like for you to consider seriously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to circle back to Teresa Shen.
My name is Teresa Shen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. This is my first time. I'm a first-generation immigrant from China, and I'm a proud American, I'm a proud Georgian, and I'm very proud to live in Forsyth. I have one daughter, and it's a rising ninth grader. So, I want to give my perspective as a minority in this beautiful country. I would say I travel around the world. I lived in a few countries, so, oh, in my adult life. So, I can conclude, America is the best country in the world. The reason I say so, the reason I say so is, I have to say, when I came to America, the reason I came to America is for economic opportunities. I loved Michael Jackson, the pop music. I loved the space shuttle, the technology. But I know so little about America. I came, I fell in love with America because I fell in love with American people, okay? By interaction with them, with different colors, different backgrounds, some are super rich, some are dirt poor, but they were so gracious to me. They embraced me, they helped me, they'll give me a dollar if I need it, if they have only a dollar in their bank account. So, I love them, okay? So, I love to learn America. Then, gradually, because my kids start, you know, education, I have to make sure, as Asian parents typically, I want to stay on top of them, make sure they know what they're talking about, right? Just A is not good enough for me. I want to make sure they know, answer my questions. So, I start to learn about the Constitution, about, we homeschool, so you know how homeschool mom is. So, we learn about US history, the true history. So, oh, wow, this is really making a lot of sense to me, why we have a society, we have a country, can be so strong, can be the leader of the world, can be the leader of the free world. So, I contrast with what I came from, right? So, I appreciate American value, the founding principle, which is now teaching in school today. We need to teach the children the founding principle of our republic is Judeo-Christian value, okay? Judeo-Christian principle. So, I don't see that in our curriculum. I don't know. So, coming back to, the reality is, it's very sad for me, to me, and many immigrants, okay, see the current, you know, Black Lives Matters or Antifa, those are all nice words, okay? Anti-fascism or Black Lives Matter, those are all nice words, fuzzy words, but really under a hidden agenda. So is the CRT. I do not have to reiterate, it's rooted in communist theory. The same playbook is being played in the communist society, is to divide and conquer, make the population to hate each other. It's happened in my society. I lived through it. They want everybody to hate each other so they can control. So, I do not have to give you the evidence why the DEI is really in disguise of CRT. So, my, all my friends here...
Thank you, Ms. Shen. Your time's up.
So, I would appreciate your consideration of the DEI.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donnelly?
Yes, hello.
You're welcome. You're there.
Hey.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bobby Donnelly. I'm the chairman of the Forsyth County Tea Party, and I'm speaking on behalf of our group. We're deeply concerned with what we're seeing in our state and our county regarding CRT and DEI. It's very troubling, you know? Excuse me. We've seen things in the paper, like transgender homecoming queens and DEI and things like this, and we've noticed that everybody on this Board, if I'm not mistaken, is Republican. And it seems like our values, our Republican values, are not matching what we're seeing in our school system. And it's... We're paying attention, we're going to be here, we're going to be back, and we're going to make sure that our values, our Republican and our conservative values, match what's being taught in our school system. Thank you very much for your time.
Next speaker is Renee Klerkovics.
Okay, hi, I'm Renee Klerkovics. I have eight pages of stuff that takes like eight minutes to read, but what it comes down to is what I want to say, listening to my previous speakers, and I assume now my forthcoming speakers. Thank you. I have two children who are graduates of Forsyth County Schools. My son has high-functioning autism. I asked to speak to his classroom, to his peers, to their parents, to answer questions, and I was told, no, 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 don't do that. And we do that with disabilities. We hide them and we act like they're shameful, and they're not. My son looks at his autism like a superpower, and now he's at Columbus State University in a population that does not look like him. It doesn't even look like what he saw at Forsyth County Schools. And listening to these speakers, trying to throw politics into how you guys decide education is going to be, it makes me understand why they feel like they're in this bubble. My daughter just started at Barry. She had, she was one of the 2020 graduates. She went through a serious depression, and I'm sorry for telling everybody that, Bella, but when she went to Barry, a private university that accepts students from all over the world, really, but all over the country, again, people who do not look like her. DEI is everywhere. I actually have a client who coaches huge organizations on how to include DEI, the importance of it, and how it builds teams and cultures. So, if we want to, in our education, stifle our children, lose their trust, and introduce them to a world where they're already on their back foot, keep going this way. But I spoke to my children, I parented, I co-taught with you guys, so that they would be ready for exactly the moment they're in right now. They can make friends with people who don't look like them. They don't judge, they're not trying to push a belief or an agenda down their throat. If anything, they're trying to listen. They have critical thought to say, you know, that's interesting, not what I believe in, but you know what? You do you. You guys, in investing, I'm going to call it investment, don't let them say you're throwing away your money. You've invested in DEI, which is super-critical for these students who we want to go forward, not only to colleges and outside of the county, but in Coca-Cola. I actually just started at the CDC. Our whole front page is about diversity. So, if you guys want to continue including our students in the future, keep doing what you're doing, and I thank you so very much.
James?
Yes, ma'am. Hey, good evening. How y'all doing?
Good.
Good, good. My name is James Burrell. I'm here tonight because I have three children in Forsyth County School System. I'm here tonight for the reason a lot of these people are here, for the concern of elements of critical race theory and DEI curriculum being taught in our classrooms, officially or unofficially. I'm not going to rehash the evidence, because I think it's been presented pretty well here by some of our speakers already. So, tonight, I would simply ask that the board implement a ban on any CRT curriculum and DEI curriculum being taught officially or unofficially in the Forsyth County School System, not just to our students, but to the faculty and staff as well. If there's no curriculum, why are we pushing our teachers and educators towards that content? It's only going to increase the chance of that content being leaked into our classroom when there's no curriculum anyway. These topics and curriculum are not only highly controversial, they require a certain higher-level critical thinking that most of the population of our students just aren't ready to deal with and calculate in their minds. If these topics are going to be discussed, leave it to the parents to discuss these topics with their children. I would just like to say that my concern is not just targeted at CRT or DEI curriculum. I would ask that the school system refrain from encouraging or implementing any content, any content or curriculum that attempts to discuss the topics that would fall in the same spectrum as these topics and theories we've already, everybody's already talking about here tonight. Understand this, whether these topics are salted with conservative or liberal ideology is completely irrelevant to me. I could care less. I really could. Please leave these issues to be discussed with parents and children in a manner that they see fit and in a time and place that they deem appropriate. Please get back to just teaching our children math, science, factual history, equity of opportunity, and teaching them how to think and not what to think. And again, I would ask the school board just to provide me with a written response to these concerns when you guys have time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Hunter Hill.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bearden, thank you, members of the board, thank you, members of the community for coming out tonight. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. My name is Hunter Hill. I'd like to be totally clear about what diversity, equity, and inclusion training is. This is a Marxist Trojan horse disguised with sunshine, rainbows, and a bow on top, because I agree with my, with a former speaker, that inclusion and that being friends and including people that don't look like us is extraordinarily important. But the DEI program is a Trojan horse that will bring in a slippery slope, a slippery slope that is happening too quick for my comfort, a slippery slope that will ultimately end in critical race theory, white repentance, and the McDonaldization of America's students. Instead of creating critical thinkers that love and exemplify their country, we're cultivating victims that see imaginary oppression in every corner they see. How pessimistic. Eventually breeding resentment and eventually revolution. This is Marxism 101. For a long time, we allowed students to be just that, students, with blank slates. Tabula rasa, I think was Aristotle's way that he put it. A nonpartisan way that we could teach students. We could bestow knowledge, insight, and creativity onto them. We created environments for them to achieve so that they could have their own success, so that they could account for their own mistakes, and so that they could eventually carve out the person that they wanted to be. And here in Forsyth County, we've had some of the top rated schools in the entire nation for a long time. Why are we changing things now? Nowadays, infiltrators have embedded themselves into our schools, they're following our students at every grade level, after-grade level, and they do this because ideals in the political arena have become so extreme that mass exoduses are happening from states and from political parties all over the place. And they understand that no reasonable person would hop on board with some of these ideals, because these ideals are anti-American, and they're extreme, and they're extraordinarily extreme. So, they're trying to trick a generation that will. And I say, we shouldn't let them. We shouldn't let them, because America ended slavery a long time ago. We've been practicing diversity and equity and inclusion for a very, very, very long time. And at the end of the day, America is still a place for opportunity, regardless of race, color, creed. We are a very colorful people, we're resilient, we're courageous, and ultimately, Ronald Reagan said that bestowing liberty is always one generation away from being lost. And so, what I'm going to end with is to, please, pass that torch of liberty on to our students, because in a blue state, in a blue area, I have a stepbrother, and he looks a lot like me, white skin color, and every day, he is ridiculed and he is bullied for being an oppressor, for being a colonizer, and for being things that he has never been. And he wants to be a lawyer. He has a future ahead of him. So, I'm here, I'm speaking on behalf of him and behalf of myself, and I hope that you will pass that torch of liberty and freedom on to our students. Thank you.
Next speaker, Daniel Blackman.
Hey, how are you? Can you guys hear me? First and foremost, this is not a political issue at all. This is, I was, on a serious note, I don't, I don't want you guys to clap at all. It's not a political issue. First time I moved to this county, I met with you, Mr. Bearden, and you responded to me, because the Sons of the Confederacy were doing a display at an elementary school. There was no outcry for that. But you made the right decision, and you addressed the issue. You empathized and you, and you spoke, and you made sure that the addresses of the concerns of folks that were in this county were addressed, not because there's something wrong with you or anyone in this room, but because it was the right thing to do. If you go two miles down this street, we pass a statue of Hyrum Parks Bill that was erected not 100 years ago, but in 2010. A gentleman that believed that people that looked like myself should not be here. And I'm not trying to invoke race and all this other stuff, but even the namesake of this county, John Forsyth, when Native Americans lived in this county, were removed after an individual that served as Secretary of State under a President of the United States, decided that the same natives that helped us to farm this area had to leave, not because of their own choice, but because of a decision that had been made based on an act that was made in response to who they were. Now, none of us in this room are responsible for the sins of our fathers or the sins of our ancestors, but we are responsible that our children don't repeat them. And in this room today, there's a lot of, there are a lot of voices. Kendall, who's sitting right here, I know him. I had notes and all that, but I saw two of my friends, and I was like, to hell with these notes, let me just let them know while we're here. There's no easy way to get to where we want to go. But when I see time after time, the fact that we try to escape the shadow of 1987, and I see the challenges that our children face in our schools, the plan you guys have proposed may not be a perfect plan, but I would encourage you to continue to listen to audience like this, listen to people like myself, because there's a lot of hurt in this county. We like to say that there's imaginary things going on. But this time last year, I spoke to a young lady at Victory Middle School that tried to commit suicide twice, because of how she was treated because of some misguided youth. I don't blame this school district. I don't blame anyone in this room. But what I will say is that if we don't address these issues and try to find a way to not politicize an issue, but to speak about it peacefully and understand that there is a medium, and the words of John F. Kennedy said, "An error does not become a mistake until we refuse to correct it." And there's a lot of correction that has to happen in our county for us to be better. And as a father of three black boys in this county, as a parent in this county, that has, my kids have white friends, and black friends, Latino friends, Asian friends, I'm going to leave all of you with a quote for your courage in this, and Frederick Douglass once says, "We can either build strong children or repair broken men." I encourage you to build the kind of children you want to lead this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Katie Gates. Katie Gates?
Hi, I'm Katie Gates. I'm a senior at South Forsyth High School, and I'm thrilled to be the first student to be speaking on this issue, because I haven't heard our voices mentioned much at all. Some of the speakers mentioned the stakeholders in this issue, parents, grandparents, neighbors, teachers, but they didn't mention students, when I think that we have the most stake in this issue. We're the ones who go to school every day. I've been educated in the Forsyth County Public School System for all 13 years of my education, and through it, I learned more than math, science, reading, and history. I learned how to speak up for myself. I learned how to communicate with a variety of people. I learned how to create change. I learned values of kindness, love thy neighbor, you know? And through all of that, I, I have had qualms, I will admit. You might remember, I've, I've gotten into some disagreements with the board and the superintendent before, over the summer, but through all of that, I felt supported, I felt that my voice was valued, even though, you know, I didn't agree with everyone. I think that I've had many wonderful teachers throughout my time in Forsyth County, but I think that one teacher's words are particularly apropos to the situation. It was my third-grade teacher, Ms. Gatte, and she said, this was one of the first months of school, and she was speaking to a room of eight-year-olds. She said, "I treat everyone in this room fairly, but that doesn't mean that I treat everyone the same, because you see, all of you are so very unique, that to treat you the same would be to treat you unfairly. Katie needs something different to succeed than Evan, and Evan needs something different to succeed than Andra. So, I will not treat you the same, but I will give each of you the different resources you need to have the same chance to succeed." Ms. Gatte's words, to me, sum up the goals of this diversity, equity, and inclusion plan perfectly. If you're looking for input on how to continue to implement this plan, talk to her. She doesn't know I said that, but she's a wonderful teacher. I asked my fellow students in this room to wear purple, to show that this is not a partisan issue, not Republican v Democrat, not left v right, not blue v red, but purple. There's no agenda behind it, other than creating a space where every child feels valued and represented, and is given the tools that they need to succeed. In such a divided time, can't that be something that we all agree on? I'm a senior this year, and I'm going to college for political science, not engineering, but I think that the skills that I learned in Forsyth County will be very valuable to that future career path. I want to thank you again for your time today, and I hope that you remember that the loudest voices aren't always the majority. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker tonight is Catherine Nuziata. Could you just restate your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Catherine Nuziata. I'm a nurse practitioner in the community. I want to start off by saying, I do not want to be here tonight. I'd rather go home and throw on my pajamas and fix dinner and grill my kids on their homework. Okay, well, maybe I don't even want to do that, but I don't want to be here, because, you know, really, let me go back. I really don't want to be here, because, yeah, what I want to believe is that Forsyth County is better than this, that I would not have to come to a school meeting to defend diversity and inclusion. I think it's great that y'all are doing that, because, you know, we want all kids to feel represented and included and heard. This isn't anything new. This isn't critical race theory, this is diversity inclusion. And I looked at everything in your plan, and it seems quite clear. This isn't anything new, folks. This is what we learned in Sunday School, this is what we learned from Mr. Rogers, you know, this is the golden rule, do unto others as... I agree, we should not have Black History Month, we should not have Women's History Month, we should not have Asian and Pacific Islanders Month, because ultimately, all history, all contributors should be taught and studied. And until we have that in the history books, we have to supplement with Black History Month and Women's History Month. But, you know, and especially since I'm pretty sure the introduction to, let's say, black people that, you know, the students get today from the history books is what I experienced in Marietta, Georgia. Our first introduction to black people is as slaves. But their history proceeds when we pillaged Africa and brought them over here. They had a culture, and they had faith, and they had governance. But we don't know any of that, because we don't teach it, right? And just like we teach our history started before we came to America, I mean, we know about the Reformation, we know about all those other governments, so let's just teach it all equally. And I agree that y'all are trying to do that. So, you know, it starts before America, we need to learn about all the different races, the contributors go back a pretty good ways, and that's what this is all about, just the start of a more complete history, an intro to authors, inventors, playwrights, researchers. It's not a curriculum, it's something that's embedded in what we teach, you know? So, we're not teaching a curriculum of diversity and inclusion, it's embedded in the literature we share with our students, it's embedded in the government lessons, it's embedded in everything that we do. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Natalie Busco. If you could, if you restate your name as well.
Yes, hi, my name is Natalie Busco. Thank you for the time this evening. I have four children in Forsyth County Schools. My oldest stepdaughters will be at Central High School and Ottwell Middle School next year, and my youngest daughter will be in first grade in the dual-language immersion program at Kelly Mill Elementary, which is a great program, thank you so much for that. I'm here tonight to talk about the DEI initiatives in Forsyth. DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Forsyth County Schools' own website details what this means and what it entails, uplifting all students, being a welcoming
If you restate your name as well.
Yes, hi, my name is Natalie Busco. Thank you for the time this evening. I have four children in Forsyth County schools. My oldest stepdaughters will be at Central High School and Otwell Middle School next year, and my youngest daughter will be in first grade in the dual-language immersion program at Kelly Mill Elementary, which is a great program. Thank you so much for that. I'm here tonight to talk about the DEI initiatives in Forsyth. DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. The Forsyth County Schools' own website details what this means and what it entails, uplifting all students, being a welcoming and safe place for all students, making sure every student has what they need for success, because no two students are the same. A great deal of misinformation has been spread regarding this, fear-mongering nonsense that is unrelated to the actual program implemented at our schools, buzzwords unrelated to the program meant to spark fear and anger. Ask yourself why an organization would rile up people against inclusion and equity efforts meant to make sure every student succeeds. What could be the motivation for going against diversity and inclusion? It is evident that the disinformation campaign has worked. It's a shame that so many have been hoodwinked by what is clearly a bigoted agenda. To have people show up at a school board meeting and fight against a program that seeks to make sure every student of the county succeeds is frankly embarrassing for our county, embarrassing that so many have bought into ridiculous lies about making white kids apologize for their skin color or Marxism. Propaganda is happening here, but it isn't in the DEI program. It's against the DEI program. Forsyth County does not have a clean past when it comes to diversity and inclusion. Many like to pretend that those issues are in our distant past, but I am not yet 40 years old, and in my lifetime, citizens of this county went on national television and said, "Black people were not welcome here." In my lifetime, Forsyth has embarrassed themselves on multiple occasions on a national stage with their attitudes about diversity, inclusion, and not just about race, but about LGBTQ members of the community and others. It is not the distant past. The people involved in those national embarrassments still live here. Their children still live here. Their grandchildren still live here. This isn't political. This isn't about politics. It is about a better future for all children of Forsyth. The issues of our past must be taught to avoid repeating the harm. In his speech last summer, the valedictorian of Lambert High School blasted the Forsyth County School System for taking no steps in Miller High School to educate the students of the history of our county and what it means. The DEI program seeks to rectify that, and that is to be commended. To end or reduce the DEI initiatives in Forsyth County would be a return to national embarrassment. Instead, the DEI program should be celebrated and expanded. It should continue Forsyth's example of educational excellence and pull us, and put us on the national stage in a way that others will strive to emulate. Dr. Beard's op-ed in the Forsyth County News clearly explained what the DEI program is and what it is trying to achieve and why it was implemented. The board would be making a catastrophic mistake for the children of Forsyth if they were to listen to those who haven't bothered reading his piece, haven't bothered reading the school system's own website, and are here based on purposeful disinformation. Thank you so much again for your time.
I'm going to remind you that we're here to listen to the speakers and not hear the applause. Our next speaker is YG Nightstorm.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Okay, my name is YG Nightstorm. I have, I'm the proud father of seven children. Yeah, it was hard to tell to raise those kids, I'll tell you that. And this is not about politics. My brother Daniel Blackman, he was here. He's a Democrat. I'm a Republican, and guess what? We actually like each other. Ain't that something? And I know it just upset a lot of folks, and we fist pounded, we even took a picture together, it just upset people. I'm like, why the hell are y'all mad? But anyway, what we're talking about here, I've had the pleasure of traveling around the world and around this country, and when I talk to people and people come at me because I have my own YouTube channel and I'm very deeply into politics, they said, "YG, what do you think about critical race theory?" And I was having a discussion with a gentleman who was a teacher, who was from Atlanta, but we were both in Washington DC at the time, this not too long ago. He said, "All white people are racist, every single last one of them. They are inherently racist. They are born racist, and that's the problem with the country. Every single damn white person is racist." And I said, "Brother, okay, okay, all right, I get that. I understand that we went through a whole lot of stuff that was unnecessary." I'm from Forsyth County, lived a long time. I am not sitting here and saying I'm blind to what happened in 87 with the Oprah special and Hosea came out here and rocks were thrown at them. Oh, I remember that. I was in the seventh grade and watched it. But I've been here for a long time, and for you to say that, every single white person, that means everybody, all of you, whether you're Democrat or Republican, don't matter, every single last one of you are racist, and then I said, "Then how are you going to change a system with the same thing?" I said, you know, because when you're constantly doing the same thing, you're perpetuating it, that's, you know, called insanity. I said, "You can't fix hate with hate." And I said, "I got the pleasure of Dr. Alveda King being my godmother, who is the niece of Martin Luther King Jr." And I said, "I operate on one premise, that I treat people by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin." And I know my time is short, and I know it's a lot of brokenness, because it's been a lot of wrong that has happened, and there's a lot of hurt feelings, and this is deep, this is deeper than politics. This is not partisan. This is a spiritual thing. And I talk real quickly, and I talk about what happened to me in 1992 when I was homeless in Atlanta and I was beaten up and robbed by people that, guess what? They looked just like me. They took my socks, they took my shoes, they urinated on me, they beat the hell out of me. I was hiding in dumpsters from the gangs during orientation when they had to shoot homeless people just to get into the gangs, and I was hiding in dumpsters. But they looked like me, but it was a white man in a Rolls-Royce who stopped and said, "Young man, God loves you, and skin color doesn't have a suffering, because God loves us all." And maybe, just maybe, if we could stop for a moment with, especially as emotional as we are, and we look at all the brokenness, what can we do to change that? It's real simple. Treat people by the content of their character and not by the color of their skin, and that means educating, educate folks, let folks know what happened in the past, but it's not the same as demonizing an entire group because of every white person is racist, every black person that says that is also racist.
The next speaker is Latricia Jester. Sorry, Sheri Hastings. I keep crossing off ahead of time. Oh, no, that was Nice Storm. Latricia.
Latricia. Latricia Jackson.
Jackson. Can you say it again, please?
Latricia Jackson. Ready? I have two children in Forsyth County schools. I am in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion training and education. This should be a part of our school, and there are several reasons why I believe this. Every single child in Forsyth County schools should feel appreciated and welcome. We should make sure every child feels included. I don't know how or why this would be debated. We pride ourselves on having great academics in this county. What would make us even better is a culture of equity and inclusion. I spoke with several administrators at Liberty Middle in 2019. A vice principal told me that students of color have said they do not feel included, they didn't really, they weren't able to really communicate it why. And I said, "Part of the reason is the room. There are no administrators or teachers at the school that looks like them. They do not learn about their history and their culture in the school. They feel excluded. They feel invisible." According to the Forsyth County website, 52% of Forsyth County students are white, 48% are students of color. Change is here in Forsyth County. The demographics prove it. As our environment becomes more, becomes even more diverse, this is something we should embrace. Our diversity is our strength, not something that we should ignore. We cannot act as if almost half of the students in the county do not matter. Let's be honest, America has a difficult history to hear, with the treatment of native people, to the treatment of African and African-Americans from slavery, Jim Crow, to systemic racism, to the internment camps during World War II, and the list goes on. We should not avoid our history. We should not hide from it. We should not try to cover it up. If we do not honestly address our history, we cheat ourselves because we cannot appreciate our progress when we do it. Our progress should be celebrated. Our history is who we were, but who we are is yet to be determined. A more inclusive student body in education is not about indoctrination. It's not about politics. We are part of a fabric of America, all of us, Asians, natives, Latinx, people of varying mental and physical capabilities, women, men, LGBTQ, white, black. We all make up American history. That's the history we should teach in Forsyth County schools. Thank you.
Laura McCon.
Hi, my name is Laura McCon, and I echo Catherine's sentiments. I don't necessarily want to be here. Many of you have heard from me before. I have a child who's high-risk and can't be vaccinated, so this is a big step out for me, but it felt really important for me to be here to express my support for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan in Forsyth County. When I heard a group of concerned parents was going to be at the meeting to voice their opposition to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan that's been in place in Forsyth County over the past few years, I just wanted to be sure that the board also heard from those of us who support the district's efforts to create a more equitable and inclusive school environment for all of the students in Forsyth County as well as their families. Your efforts have not gone unnoticed, and they've provided hope for many of us that progress in Forsyth County and in Forsyth County schools is possible. It seems that there's some confusion as to what the goal of Forsyth County's DEI plan is, and my understanding is that the goal is to create a more inclusive and equitable learning environment for students of all abilities, beliefs, races, and backgrounds. Indoctrination of beliefs is not the goal, and shame is not the motivator. It would be naive of a district, its parents and its students, to say that we don't have any issues with biases and that our biases aren't reflected, at least sometimes, in our actions towards others, myself included. Having biases does not make us bad or racist automatically. It makes us human, and what gives me hope is that humans are just as capable of unlearning their biases once they are aware of them, and in doing so, we can live more harmoniously and with appreciation for people who are different from us. I believe we strengthen our community as a whole when we acknowledge our differences and the biases that shape our beliefs about those who are different than us, and I believe that if we truly believe in equity and fairness, which we teach our students and children from a very young age, we teach them in home, we teach them in church, we teach them in school, then I think it's really important that we learn and teach our kids how to identify implicit biases, unconscious biases, and reconcile them so that we can truly treat all students fairly. I can't think of a better place to start than in our schools and with our teachers and students in Forsyth County, and I would love to see this effort expanded to the community at large. I commend the district on this initiative. It's a step in the right direction with more work to be done going forward, and thank you very much for starting the process.
I believe next is Ms. Kathleen Kraneck. It's a replacement, I believe.
Sorry, it was a little bit of a mix-up.
Ready? Were you doing a replacement, or is this?
She was sick, yes, and now she's back.
She's back, okay. So you're back?
Yes, thank you.
So can you say your name again? Because, so, okay, restate your name then.
Sure, Madeline Samara.
Okay. Glad you're better.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to try to talk loud. So first, I'd like to thank the Board of Ed and Superintendent Dr. Bearden for implementing the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan, which supports our county's initiative to provide quality education for all and ultimately preparing our students for success in a global workforce. The impact of diversity in education is in alignment with the needs of the future of work. So what does that look like? Future of work incorporates remote first hiring. So companies now and in the future will continue to hire talent from around the world. So a company based out of the UK, out of Asia, out of South America will hire a candidate in Georgia and vice versa. The future of work includes continual learning, upskilling, and a growth mindset. And the future of work incorporates a hybrid workforce, which means that future workers will no longer rely on one skill set. Instead, they must, instead, they must have many skills to remain competitive. So I wanted to kind of create a thread line of success in education to the workforce, because ultimately, that's what we're looking to do when we're providing quality educations to our students. So in an article from Harvard Business Review titled "The Other Diversity Dividend," the authors wanted to look at the causal relationship between diversity and financial performance within venture capitalists, and they chose this group because, you know, these firms are flat, they're decision-makers, and their choices have clear business consequences. So they found that just by hiring 10% more women, profits increased by 10%. And another hard data, I just wanted to quickly point out, that firms that have partners from different ethnicity showed an increased return on investment from 26% up to 32%. So what we see in the real world and the future we are preparing is well-supported by this DEI plan. It's helping our children lead with success in a global marketplace, and I look forward to helping you make this success within our community. And thank you so much for creating a safe space for all children and all families. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Emma Marzullo. I'm a recent graduate of Forsyth Central, and I'm currently a junior at the University of Georgia, and I'm studying political science on the pre-law track. Go Dogs! One universal and very American truth is the desire for an excellent public education, something that should not be political. We are lucky to live in Forsyth County, which is revered for its public schools. I would like to start by thanking the Board of Education and our superintendent for your commitment to providing equal education for all students through diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. As the Forsyth County population continues to grow and new schools are being built, it is important, as the DEI plan states, to respect and educate all people, processes, and perspectives which differ within Forsyth County and the families here, providing every student with the tools to succeed in a welcoming learning environment. Through the strategies and action steps to achieve these goals in your plan, you, the Board of Education, have created a learning environment where students and teachers are examining the realities of our modern world. You have reached to further create a public education that is accurately representative of the world we live in beyond K through 12 schools. The reality of that world beyond graduation is collaborating and making connections with people who are different from yourself. By challenging students and staff to have the openness and respect to see through another's lens, you are allowing diversity not just to strengthen our schools, but our community as well, the beautiful Forsyth County community. You are doing the responsible and admirable thing by continuing your support of all students in pursuit of their education and a prosperous future, which, need I remind my fellow citizens in this room, is not a political indoctrination agenda. I'm here to encourage you to continue and to follow through with the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan beyond this next year. And continue with their mission statement, create a culture of belonging in Forsyth County schools where differences, abilities, and beliefs are respected and celebrated. Thank you so much for your time.
Our next speaker is Subha Cinthil.
Hello, my name is Subha Cinthil, and I am a current senior at Denmark High School. So my family first moved to Forsyth County when I was in the first grade, and I've now attended five different schools within the system, and I'm proud to call Forsyth County my home. Forsyth County at its core is a diverse place. I mean, look around you, and it is our duty to embrace all of the growth and embrace our diversity and cultivate an environment of inclusivity. So the DEI plan is a step in this right direction. So first, I'd like to take a moment to talk about how grateful I am for the opportunities the Forsyth County School System has provided to me over the course of my education here. When I moved to Shilopoy Elementary in the third grade, that was the first time where I was taught by someone who looked like me, my third-grade teacher who was an Indian woman, and it was really... And it was really a different experience to see someone who looked like me in a role that was a teacher, someone that was idolized to be knowledgeable and know what she was doing. This year, in my AP Lit class, we read Fences by August Wilson. This book is a novel and a play about an African-American family in the 1950s, and Wilson writes that "When the sins of our father come to us, we do not have to play host." And this DEI plan is not about who is right or wrong. It is about mainly the last letter of inclusivity. The FCSS homepage parades our diversity as a county, talking about being the sixth-largest in Georgia with over 51,400 students representing 124 students in 52 languages. How can we find pride in being such a diverse community and not take the right steps to protect our diverse students, family members, staff, and, most importantly, our community? Diversity, again, is not a partisan issue. That's why we're wearing purple today, because it's not an issue about who's right and wrong. It's about including our students to make a better and safer quality of education. And I want to ask the Board to reflect on how the current aspects of the DEI program have helped us grow as students. Thank you so much for listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the school board. My name is Damian Galvin. Like many of the speakers before me, I did have a speech prepared that went well beyond the time restraints here, but I'm gonna go a little bit off-script. I was invited here to speak by my best friend, my co-host, my business partner, Varun Kadathala. We both became politically active last year and decided that we had to go on this endeavor of discovering our community after the events that have become notorious today unfolded about a year ago. But the events that unfolded were not only north of the state, they happened right here in the county. We became politically active first with a petition, a petition asking you members of the school board to review some racial misconduct that occurred right in front of the Capitol Building. Students drove past Black Lives Matter protesters yelling "F them" N-words and playing racially insensitive songs. The first day our petition was out, we gained 700 signatures. Within a week, we had 3,000. From there, we decided to start a podcast, a podcast about having conversations. The exact thing that this DEI program ensures that we will have: conversations with people who look like me. See, Varun and I never had a teacher as a mentor that looked like us. I have countless friends that are parts of the LGBTQIA community that don't have counselors that they can go to to talk about their experiences. You see, this plan does not yell "You are different." It yells "You are no different. You are welcome within this county." In front of the same Capitol Building, I saw my father arrested for being born across a line. He was arrested in an attempt to become a United States citizen because if anyone loves this country, it's my father. He instilled these values in me, the reason that I'm here speaking to you guys, the reason that I attend Alliance Academy for Innovation, the reason I want to pursue a career in legal services. See, these circumstances that have affected me, I may not always talk about, but they are always shown through what I do. Last year, Varun and I, December to be exact, decided to organize a fundraiser to help children in low-income communities, a community that has often told us that we are not welcome. We worked with the Place Forsyth to bring numerous toys to children who otherwise would not have had any. Forsyth County educational systems have instilled these values in us, and the DEI program will ensure that future leaders who are members of minority communities will also feel empowered. I'm not here to change anyone's minds. I'm here to let children know, who look like me, that they have an ally in the school board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I believe that was our final speaker. On behalf of the Board of Education and staff, I want to thank tonight's speakers and attendees for being here. Our public school system has a long history of success because of our dedicated teachers, guardians, community members, and businesses. Together, these stakeholders have built our vision of quality and superior performance for all. We look forward to continued collaboration with our community. As we all can agree, our students are our future, and we all are here because we want what is best for them and our county. Before we proceed with our agenda, we're gonna take a brief pause, so that those who wish to leave may do so. If you would like to stay for the business portion of our meeting, we welcome you to do that as well. We'll be back in just a couple moments. Thank you. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Our next topic is presentation and discussion, and first up is the Dual Language Immersion Program with Mikhail. And Leanne Rice.
Yeah.
And Leanne. Welcome, ladies.
Good evening. We are very pleased to be able to talk to you and give you an update about our Dual Language Immersion Program. Just to recap, as far as your Board governance goals, this directly addresses Goal 2, which is teach the whole child, and it also directly addresses our learner profile, specifically the Engage and Contribute section. Our DLI program objectives focus specifically on bilingualism. We want students to be able to speak proficiently in two languages, but also biliteracy. We don't just want children to speak, but we also want them to read and write in two different languages. This promotes high levels of academic achievement and also intercultural competence. And you'll notice that everything centers on the Forsyth County Schools' learner profile. Cognitive benefits of dual-language immersion are many. Research shows how being bilingual and using two languages really impacts our brain. It develops the working memory, it develops the muscle memory, lots of different things. I'm not gonna read all of these for you, but definitely looking at the physiological impacts of students who know and can speak and use two languages proficiently. We wanted to go back and tell you a little bit because we're gonna focus on moving into the secondary schools and what DLI is gonna look like at the secondary level, but I want to go back and summarize quickly what it looks like at the elementary level right now. We're in our third year of DLI, so students are currently in kindergarten, first, and second grade at three of our elementary schools, coming Kelly Mill and Brandywine. It's in its first year at Mashburn Elementary, so in kindergarten there. In the elementary school model, we have teams of two teachers. So for instance, in kindergarten, you're gonna have a teacher who is a native English speaker. She has certification in early childhood elementary education. She also has her ESOL endorsement. And then you're also gonna have a teacher who is a native or near-native Spanish speaker who is highly proficient in that target language. Those teachers have to pass proficiency tests in reading, speaking, and writing to make sure that they are highly proficient in that target language. And then we also have peer professionals in both kindergarten classes, a native English speaker but also a native or near-native Spanish speaker that's in the Spanish side of the classroom. Students are gonna spend approximately half the day on the English classroom, learning content through English. They'll spend the other half of the day in the Spanish-speaking classroom, learning that content in Spanish. We do have a strict separation of languages in those classrooms, so if it's the part of the day that we're learning Spanish, we can't speak English in that classroom. They are immersed in that Spanish language. We do ask at the elementary level for a six-year commitment. So when parents are in the DLI program, when they sign their children up in kindergarten, we are expecting that they stay with the program through fifth grade. And so what we want to talk to you about tonight is what happens when they exit fifth grade and they go to middle school. We know that you all have been getting questions, especially with Hendrix opening and a new middle school, and how this will look like in our middle schools. And so we're very excited to talk to you a little bit about what we're gonna see, excuse me, in the secondary level. As students leave elementary school, if they've spent those six years in the Dual Language Immersion Program, then we expect those students to develop high school levels of proficiency in their ability to speak and read and write in Spanish. It's pretty amazing that students will leave fifth grade basically performing at a high school level, a student who would have completed the high school level of Spanish. And so what do we do with those children? So in the middle school and high school programs, we're really focused deeply on the content. Those students will be able to develop adult-level bilingual skills when they leave high school. Think about the impact in work-in-school settings, university settings. They'll be able to take advanced content classes for university credit at the high school level. And they'll also be taking advanced content courses with high levels of rigor and high cognitive demand in both languages. So they'll be developing those academic skills, not only in English, but also in our target language, which right now is Spanish. We'll see higher graduation rates from our students, especially with students that are in an underrepresented population. Our graduation rates for, for example, our ESOL students or second-language students sometimes fall behind our other populations, but students in this program have been shown to exceed the other high school graduation rate. So we're very excited to see the benefits of this as we go into the secondary level. I'm gonna let Mishaella show you the research behind this, which is very exciting.
Well, thank you so much for having us tonight. The two graphs that you see here, or the two prisms that you see here, really show the benefits of continuing dual-language immersion into the secondary years. So on the left-hand side, what you see is really the English language proficiency of English learners either in a regular ESOL program or in a dual-language immersion program. And what we see is that the kids learn a lot of English very, very fast. Usually, language learning is a year-long process, takes about five to seven years to learn any language. Through the English language program or any ESOL program, they learn a lot of language very, very fast. And it is counterproductive, and it's a little bit mind-boggling to think that even though our English language learners in dual-language immersion that spend 50% of the day in English and 50% of the day, for some of them, their home language, their native language, they are actually exceeding in English language by the fifth grade quite a bit to just regular English, even though they're spending a whole day in English. And you'd think that that would really make the difference, but it does not, and the research behind it is very clear. And the research on the right-hand side explains that a little bit. So for young learners that are learning another language, whether that is an English learner or whether that is an English-dominated student that is learning Spanish, for example, they have more needs than what an adult learner would need, really, in order to learn another language. So an adult learner or an older learner can really just focus on the language development part. They already have their academic, their linguistic, their cultural, their social, their cognitive development is already completed by the time that they take on another language. Not so for young learners, and especially for our English language learners. In the Dual Language Immersion Program, we make sure that we really focus on all of those needs and not just the language development part. We're making sure that their cognitive and academic development is picked up exactly where they are, even if that is in a native language, and we make sure that that is not interrupted but that that is furthered in their native language so that they can really make those cognitive, academic, social, and cultural progress that we want to see. And the outcome of that is that they are more proficient in English, that they have higher biliteracy in their native language, in Spanish, and that their academic achievement is not interrupted but that it's really furthered, and that is where we see the research that shows us that they're outperforming. And of course, then they learn another language. It is not only that they are having higher levels of proficiency in English, but it's also that they're really continuing, if they have Spanish as their native language, with their proficiency in Spanish. But also, our English-dominated students that are part of the program, they are truly bilingual and biliterate by the time that they graduate. But we have to continue it really into the secondary years in order to solidify those gains that they made by fifth grade. So here's just a comparison of what kind of language proficiency that Ms. Rice was talking about just a second ago. So usually, we have an intermediate-high level for AP Spanish students when they take on a college-level class in 12th grade or 11th grade in our high school. Most of our kids, these are just targets that we have, we will see that by fifth grade they have that kind of language proficiency already. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're ready to take an AP exam just because of the maturity and the content, but they have the language proficiency by then. And the goal is that we can partner with universities at the high school level so that they can have actually university credit by the time that they graduate high school in Forsyth County schools. So this is what is called the graph in the research. It really compares the different models, and this is really for English language learners. The 50% mark there is really the average of what academic achievement is for a regular student, for an English-dominated student. What we see is that if we have an English language learner, in the very beginning, they're making huge gains. They learn a lot of language. But as we're moving towards exiting them from ESOL services, we see that their language skills in English actually stagnate. Dual-language immersion in the two forms that we have in Forsyth County schools is actually the only program that really closes the achievement gap for English language learners and for other at-risk populations. So they are, those are the only two programs that really help for them to not only close the achievement gap but to exceed the achievement gap and perform as well as or better than their regular peers in class. Something that is very, very, you know, something that we're looking very carefully at because we want to include that population and make sure that we continue to raise them up throughout the primary and secondary years. So Ms. Rice talked already about, those are the current DLI schools that we have, three of them that are articulated into second grade, we're starting in third grade next year, and then one that is starting first grade next year. So according to our current feeder pattern, what we have is that we're articulating into middle school in 2024, 2025. That will be the first cohort really graduating into middle schools, which then annually we will have about 50 students at DeSana, at Otwell, at Hendrix, and then starting in 2026, 27, we will have about 50 students coming from Mashburn to Lakeside. That will be a very consistent number of students that we will have articulating into the middle schools. So Ms. Rice and I just briefly met with middle school principals that are affected in those four middle schools late, just recently, and we talked a little bit about what options we have, how we can support dual-language immersion in the middle school. It is not going to be exactly the same model that we have in elementary. In middle school, what we see is that students really want to explore. They want to explore all kinds of connections classes. They want to be able to take different ones and try themselves out. And we want to make sure that in dual-language immersion with that rigid 50/50 that we see in the elementary school, that we still provide choice in middle school. So there are two options that we're gonna give to middle school principals, and they can choose to either choose one of those options or then they could even, you know, alternate it from year to year depending on the staffing, and we'll talk about that in just a second. So option number one is really that they are two content classes. You have to have two content classes in order to really be still considered dual-language immersion. So one of them would be a content science or social studies course, which would come out of a regular allotment, and the second one would be an advanced language and literacy course in Spanish that the students take. That could be their first connection, or that could be their fifth academic class. So with that, we would have a science or social studies teacher that would have to be certified in their content and highly, highly proficient in Spanish. Depending on whether the schools can find that or not, they have this option to implement this for the sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade year. In the eighth grade, we would just change it up a little bit because with advanced math and with physical science and Georgia Studies, we really want to make sure that the kids stay away from those areas and that we go into more media literacy and culture and history for the DLI students during that eighth-grade transition year. So the nice thing about this option also is that any native speakers that are part of our community that are coming into the county, for example, or that are part of our schools already, that they could take those classes as well. So the native speakers could join in the dual-language immersion courses. Option number two is a little bit more geared towards what we see a lot when we transition from elementary to middle school secondary dual-language immersion programs is that students demand that choice, and in order for them to stay in dual-language immersion, we could give them a path, if our middle school principals decide to do so, where we really just categorize a little bit who is a highly motivated dual-language immersion learner, who is a motivated and who is a somewhat motivated dual-language immersion learner, depending on how much they really want to take on. All of these courses can be All of these courses can be taught by the Spanish language teacher, so there is not a certified social studies or science teacher that would have to teach these classes, but they could decide how much of that they would take on. They, the students would all have a, in seventh and eighth grade, a modern language class for a Level III. It would be split over the seventh and eighth grade year, so they would complete a high school credit Level III class in middle school, and then articulate into a Level IV class, and then attempt the AP Spanish exam, hopefully in 10th grade, and then could move on to AP Spanish literature in 11th grade and pursue dual enrollment after that. Again, this is an opportunity for native speakers of Spanish to also participate in those classes and earn those credits as well. Timeline, we still have a few years, but we pride ourselves in, you know, making a lot of plans and really planning ahead. So we started really with a first meeting this year. Next year, we would like to meet on a regular basis with those middle school principals, do a book study, and then invite our middle school principals to go to our elementary schools that have our dual language immersion program in place so that they can see what that is like. Now that the middle school principals have an idea of what it will look like in middle school, they can also consider dual language immersion for hiring for the next few years so that hopefully by the time that we move up to middle school that we have the staff in place. The following two years, we would continue with our regular meetings, but we would also go and visit middle schools that already have dual language immersion in Gwinnett, in Cobb, and APS. They all have dual language immersion programs that by then will have a middle school program in place. And then at the end of 2024, we will have transition parent meetings for our dual language immersion families so that they can really make a great informed decision on what model they like and what dual language immersion will look like for the future. Thank you so much, and before we leave, I just want to share maybe a couple of videos. I know we're running short on time here, of a couple of voices from students that were asked, "What makes you smile in dual language immersion?", and these were just some of the answers.
What makes me smile in DLI is that I can write in English, and I can also write in Spanish, and I can also talk to my grandparents more in Spanish, which I really love.
And this is from a parent and future teacher of dual language immersion.
Hi there, my daughter Alice is in kindergarten DLI at Brandywine, and there are so many things that make me smile about what she's learning and how she's learning in the program. But the thing I like the most is when I hear her singing the songs in Spanish to herself in her room, or when I hear her counting, just when I see her counting in Spanish just naturally, and it's coming to her as naturally as English, so, and I'm excited to be a teacher in the program next year.
And I'm going to play just one last one.
What makes me happy in Spanish classes is because every time I look at Celine Dion it makes me have joy.
Thank you so much, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding the transition to middle school.
Can I tell you one story? My granddaughter's in DLI at Cumming. This makes me smile. She was in my house one day and she was, and this has been, I mean, she hadn't been in it but three or four months, and she was doing an art, she was coloring or something, and she says, they call me Dandy, she says, "Dandy, necesito ayuda!", and I'm like, "What?" And she was telling me she needed help, but she just said it in Spa, you know, she was thinking it in Spanish, and it was just so cool to, to just see her, you know, she didn't even realize that she had done that. And so I feel like that, that's what you want, and it was just really cool.
Yeah, Darla, I had similar experience in my personal life because my two nieces were on the mission field in Ecuador through age 12, and so they came home, dual language emerged. And so it was not so much about the language proficiency, language comes, but it's what it did to their brain. They both graduated Jones County High School in central Georgia with, as valedictorians, back-to-back years. They both became ESOL teachers, pastors, lawyers. They, they did well in life, they're having their kids now, and they're teaching them. So you don't have to sell me on it because I know what that, learning that language and totally learning it really does for the brain and their learning capability.
Yeah, I just had a question. Do, and I love this as well, I mean, I wish I could put, you know, I wish it was at every elementary school so that my children could take advantage of it. Is there, and sorry to not know this, but is there a language offered at middle school now currently?
So right now, we offer Spanish in eighth grade, but not starting in sixth or seventh grade, so, but in eighth grade, students can take Spanish one.
Okay, so that's how it's offered now, but you're just looking to, yeah, I love this. Is there, is there a plan to offer something before then? Or is it, is this just the only option that you're looking at for the dual language?
So for the dual language immersion, we really grow one grade level at a time, so, you know, we would probably look at sixth grade world language offerings through that dual language immersion program when we roll up into sixth grade.
Gotcha, okay, thank you very much.
So it's exciting that you're starting out, getting, looking ahead for middle school because we know from learning before that the hiring is a process, and sometimes the schools have hired a year or so ahead or swapped teachers when the time came when they needed at that level. So imagine this, the two things to be considering is, what are the students' interests going to be, whether they're going to be that high-level interest or that medium, so you're going to, at that point, need input from the parents to figure out what the demand is going to be, what level, and then therefore to hire appropriately. So you mentioned that the Spanish teacher could teach some of that, but they needed to have a social studies teacher, that would be a different situation, so that, that could be a hiring challenge.
Right, so, and it's, that's why, that's one of the reasons why we gave the schools choice. So if they are able to secure somebody that is social studies or science certified and has that high language of proficiency in Spanish, they could offer option one. If that is something that they are not able to secure, then they would have to go with option two. But if they are able to, you know, have that staff in place, that, you know, they could either do option, option one or option two based then, you know, on the need of, of the students or the preferences of the students right there. It's usually, we, we don't want dual language immersion to stop just because we don't have the staff in place, so that's why we think it is good to give an option to the, to the school so that they can adjust accordingly. So if for some reason they had a social studies teacher and they could teach it for one or two years and then decided to leave and they were not able to replace that teacher, they could still switch to option two and still be dual language immersion.
I think it's also exciting to see the success, to see the success story of the students that end up outperforming students that are in a normal program. These students are learning two languages at one time, it's not their native language, and they outperform, so I think that's amazing program success for you all. All right, well, that was great, but we need to move on, so thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your support.
Our next topic is the Fine Arts Strategic Plan update, and I assume Catherine Kieser's going to be doing that.
Good evening, Dr. Bearden, Ms. Marcy, and members of the board. Thank you so much for the opportunity tonight to come and present an update on our fine arts programs and our arts initiative strategic plan. Through tremendous efforts and dedication of our teachers this year and our school communities, we were able to continue to safely perform and create this year, which was exciting for us. In the performing arts, we continue to provide enriching experiences for students and the opportunity for them to grow, not only as performers, but as the young people who can communicate and collaborate and persevere. Listed here are a few of the many accomplishments that we achieved this year. Owl Middle School Band, South Forsyth Middle School Band, and North Forsyth High School Chorus all participated in virtual invitational performances. Our chorus, band, and orchestra students were able to receive valuable feedback from large group performance evaluations. We had 98 middle and high school students represent us at the GMEA All-State Band and Orchestra. GMEA was unable to host all-state chorus this year, however, in a normal year, we also have many choral students who represent us as well. We were well represented at GHSA One Act, both as the state champions with Denmark High School for One Act and in literary state, in individual and group performances as well with those three schools listed. We like to celebrate our seniors, and we have 243 seniors this year who will graduate with a Godot Fine Arts Diploma Seal. And I've also included links on performing arts and the diploma seal recipients for you to click on and see the individual students that were listed. We have quite a few amazing students to celebrate there. In the visual arts, we continue to have students represent us at multiple state and nationally-recognized art shows. Again, the link at the top provides a list of students who receive recognition at these events. Our students' work has been showcased at the All-State Art Symposium, National Art Honor Society National Jury Show, very few students get to participate in that, Scholastic Art Awards, and the Atlanta Dogwood Festival. We were well represented at the Georgia Capitol Art Show, which was shared virtually with all of our state representatives. In April, we were able to host our annual Art Honors Day where we offered six different day-long workshops, where over 100 high school art students got to meet and participate in classes run by college professors from across the state. These students not only worked on artistic skills, but had the opportunity to make connections with post-secondary opportunities. During this event, we also host an art show, and each of you should have a poster, if you don't, I know where they are, that represents student work from across the county. So I will make sure you get one of those if they're not with you tonight. In addition to the many wonderful events we've had this year, we wanted to provide you an update on our arts initiative strategic plan. Just as a recap from early last year, the purpose of this arts plan is to promote and advance arts education in Forsyth County Schools, increase our partnership with the community, and eliminate barriers to increase participation and ensure quality arts education experience for all of our students. Our arts initiative supports the learner profile in many capacities, the DEI plan, and the governance goals of teaching the whole child and making our large schools feel small. Fine arts education excels in guiding students to build lifelong 21st century skills, and many times they find a home and a sense of belonging in our classes. Our desired outcomes were created through the analysis of data and input from multiple stakeholders, including community members, teachers, students, and administrators, among others, both in our schools and communities. These are our three strategic directions and the work that has been accomplished this year. Strategic Direction 1, expanding capacity for instruction and learning in the arts for all. We are very excited next year with the opening of East Forsyth, that we will have an East Forsyth Youth and Community Orchestra, which will support and connect all of the East vertical community. This will include students from elementary all the way through, grades three through five, all the way through 12th grade, who are interested in orchestra. We continue to expand our music therapy offerings to support students with special needs. We have successfully implemented an FVA High School Visual Arts One course, and our district arts leadership team has been restructured to better support the goals of our strategic plan. Our teachers masterfully transitioned to our art shows and performances into hybrid events, which allowed access to family and friends across the state, and in some cases, even the world. Our creative people can come up with creative solutions. This is one of the many ways that we met connecting our schools and community through the arts. Of course, we also have the Focal Center, which is in planning, and we are excited about the tremendous benefit to our students and increased arts access in our community through the Focal Center. In strategic goal number three, improving and increasing quality resources for the arts, of course, we started back in 2018 with the bond, and South, North, and Central all had their auditoriums revamped and are now modernized, which is lovely. And then, of course, our Focal Center was part of that bond as well. We also continue to look at our curricular resources and how we can update those to better suit the needs of our students and teachers. So while I could stand here all night and expound to you the reasons why the fine arts are amazing, I thought it would be great if you could hear from some students themselves on why the impact, the impact that arts have had on their lives. So I hope you enjoy this brief video. We have three students, and I do want to give a shout-out to John String, who works in our department as one of our personalized learning coaches. He is a fabulous teacher, and he taught me, he said he's not going to do it for me, he's going to make me learn. So with his help, we created this great video.
Hi, my name is Allison, I'm a student at Chattahoochee Elementary.
Hi, I'm Melissa Laura, I am a senior at Forsyth Central High School.
Hi, my name is Ritesh Manugla, and I'm a senior at Denmark High School.
I love my art class and all of my music and arts is, I like art because it gives me a way to express myself, and it just lets me be myself.
I started AP Studio this year and AP Art History, and really what art means to me is, I feel like at school sometimes it's easy to forget that, you know, we're learning, like, we're learning subjects, but we're also learning more about ourselves as people.
Honestly, I, I got into theater kind of because my mom wanted me to. She always like loved, she always loved the arts growing up, and she always liked what it did for like public speaking and things like that, and getting to meet people, so I was, I was like, okay, why not, whatever, it was sixth grade. And, you know, it really turned into my, probably the best moments I've had throughout high school and in middle school. I'm very, very grateful that she did urge me to do it.
Here at Forsyth Central, I've learned a lot more about myself, about my passions, and I've found something that I, I'm interested in, that I maybe want to make a living with.
Gives me a way to just kind of let everything out.
Express myself, to understand more about, you know, how to talk about the things that are important to me.
You know, I had a lot of academic pressure growing up. Theater and chorus really allowed me to kind of forget about it, like all those after-school rehearsals and things like that, allowed me to like really put that to the side and just focus on me.
I think orchestra really isn't like anything else. I mean, you can't play 20 instruments by yourself, but working as a group, it definitely makes a difference because it really just shows how, when people work as a team, it can be so much better.
They kind of, you know, saw me for the person that I am and not my grades, my staffs, you know? And so that in and of itself changed my life and made me just a happier person. Without fine arts, without these experiences, I don't know where I'd be in life.
Whether it's on my instrument or on a piece of paper with pencil, it just makes me feel good.
You know, some students learn their passions here, and my passion is art.
They're great kids, and it's, it's really, it was lovely to meet all of them, and they're so excited, and the orchestra student from Chattahoochee will be able to participate in that East Orchestra next year, and Melissa, the student from Central, is planning on going to North Georgia. I believe she's majoring in psychology and minoring in art. And then Ritesh is going to the Royal Welsh College of Music and Theater in Wales to continue his studies there. He received, he said he received enough scholarship money that it was actually cheaper for him to go there than stay here. It's pretty amazing. So it is, it's an honor to serve these students and these, these teachers, and we really appreciate your continued support. Did you have any questions?
Just on the strategic plan, I remember there was multiple, there was, the plan had several years of steps to do, and some of the steps in the plan obviously were financial, some of them were building support in the community, which may or may not have had a price tag with it, but obviously last year when we had such a budget challenge with, with the deficit, we had to put things somewhat on a pause, but we don't, one of the, part of the things of the design of the plan was we wanted to be sure that fine arts were embedded into our strategic plan such that they were financially independent, that we didn't have it say, oh, we're at a low-budget year, things have to set aside. That was kind of the whole point of it. So where are we at in the year-by-year plan and how to implement that? Where is it so that we don't sit it on a shelf and have it just get dusty?
That is an area that we're going to need to look at. We did have to pause on quite a few financial pieces because we wanted to make sure that we got through, obviously, this year the way we needed to. And as we look forward to the future, coming back to that piece and working with all of our departments together to figure out how to create that sustainability is definitely still part of the plan. I think that we've just had to push it back a year. push it back a year. But hopefully, we can still find ways to work through it and create that sustainability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So tonight, we're going to talk about the April 2021 financial statements. As always, we try to keep in mind Goal 3, making sure we're good stewards, effective, and efficient for the use of our funds. So we're going to dive into basically the cash statement where we are. So we started the month off with about $134 million. We ended the month about $130. The state of Georgia is giving back some austerity money back to us, so we saw a big chunk of that hit this month. So that allowed us not to draw as much cash down as we needed. This time last year, we're at $111 million. So you can see we're up pretty high in terms of the amount of money we have over last year this time. That's going to help us going into the summer before taxes are collected. Then if we look at the revenue per se, broken down by different categories, happy to say, if you look at Avalarm Tax, we're at 99.91% collection. We've almost collected 100% of the money. My projection is we will collect 100% of the money this year. That's better than we were last year. I think we were down $2 million in collections last year in terms of what it is. So with that being said, it's fascinating that the year like we've had, that we've been able to collect all the money for that.
So is that 99% of what we projected, or is 99% of what we were supposed?
99% of collection already year-to-date. So in other words, whatever we collect now is basically going to be positive additional money we collect above and beyond what we had budgeted.
But is it, if I phrase my question right, it's what we budgeted versus what we should have gotten? Like, in other words, like, we knew that going into this fiscal year, that the economy bill is tough, so like, in theory, we're supposed to get this, but we knew normally we get 99%, but we kind of were like, ooh, maybe we should assume 98%. So is that 99.91% of what we thought we were going to get instead of what we should get?
Right. So we normally take out the 2.5% for the cut the county gets. We used a 98.5% collection rate, which means we were predicting not to get 1.5%. This is the combination of the collection rate was better than we thought, and also some of the prior taxes not collected have come in stronger than we thought. That's why we're sitting at the 99.91%.
Thank you.
Then we've looked at the other categories. You can see the intangible tax is 100%. Real estate transfers, we almost collected all that money. And then, title of alarm tax is still coming in strong. So people are still buying vehicles, even though apparently there's a chip shortage. I don't know if that's used vehicles or not, so we'll see. On the expense side, this is some interesting information. This time last year, we're at 83.3%. We're at 78.57. There's a couple of reasons for that. Part of it is the CARE Act 2 and CARE Act 3 money. Because of how we're pulling that money down, we actually have to move some of the expenses out of our budget over to the CARE Act 2 or 3. So it's allowing us not to have some of those expenses in our budget this year. And that's why we're going to do pretty well when we close the year in out. So back in beginning of the year, we had some CARE Act 2 money, and we used it to offset some of their transportation costs. So we were able to move some of that money over. And that helped us a lot right there at the beginning of the year. Debt service cash analysis, right now, we're at 83, almost $84 million. This time last year, we're at 59.7. We will cover this in a few minutes, but our Avalarm, excuse me, our SPOS sales tax is continually to come in at strong numbers, numbers that we haven't seen before. And you'll see that in a minute. What's, that's going to do is allow our SPOS 5 account to end in a very positive amount compared to what we had predicted. We predicted 36 million. Right now, I'm predicting it's going to be 50 million or more. So that's going to be a big positive for us when it comes to what we're going to do with that money down the road. On investment summaries, right now, we're sitting on $200 million. Last year, we had 301. Of course, the majority of that money is the bond money we got, the 2020 bonds. We're spending that at a good clip. By this time next year, we're probably going to be down to the last $30 or $40 million left to finish off New Hope Schools and some other small projects we have out there. So by this time next year, we'll have spent a majority of the 2020 bond money. And that was about $147.5 million, the bonds plus the premiums issued. Now, here's the good news. The collections for April, excuse me, for March, collected in May was $4.3 million. That's an incredible number if you compare to what it was in the previous months. With that being said, the total average is almost 3.5, and the last 12 months is almost $4 million. So if you go back last year this time, we were collecting about 3.3 average, so we're collecting about $160,000 more a month on average. In the last 12 months last year, we're collecting about $609,000 more per month on average than, for the last 12 months than we were last year this time. And just in the last 12 months, we've been averaging 446,000 more per month than we were the total average for this total collection period for SPOS, the remainder of SPOS 5. Elementary schools, we are sitting on $4.1 million. This time last year, we're at 4.9. We are starting to see more activity in terms of they're trying to close schools out this year, so there's a little bit more going on now that we don't have the, as much as, we don't have the issues with COVID that we did this time last year. The middle schools were at 1.43. This time last year, 1.58. High schools surprisingly have done well, better than anybody else. They're sitting at $5 million, and this time last year, at 4.2. So basically, what's happened is, is the amount of money that middle schools and elementary had as percentage have shifted over to the high school. This time last year, the high schools only had about 39% of the total pie, and now they've got 48%. Elementarys were about 46, and they've dropped to 39. And of course, the high schools are kind of stayed flat. They were 15% last year, and now they're 13. And that is the April financial statements for 2021. Any questions? All right, sir. Well, first off, let me say thank you for letting me serve in this capacity. We all serve outside of our normal board duties. You know, we do things that are needed. This is how I serve the community. And I had the privilege of attending the National Prescription Drug and Heroin Summit. Wow, that sounds like a fantastic summit, right? But it really brought to light some issues that I wanted to bring back to us. Many times, we hear about, and I'm glad Todd's here in the room because he'll hear me say it, he brings us items that we may not understand what really is being said. So I wanted to do a little bit of education and bring back some of the slides that I picked up at the conference, as well as I've got a couple of speakers to talk about real stuff instead of just reading y'all PowerPoint. That can be so old sometimes. So tonight, the topic is, it's not your parents' marijuana. That rang clear in the conference. You know, marijuana is not marijuana anymore. It's very different. It's called different things. We hear a lot of terms in the media, marijuana, cannabis, hemp, THC, CBD. What are these things? You know, the first statement is just some things that are said in the media. Marijuana has more THC. And hemp boasts that, hey, we have more CBD. Tonight, I'm not going to deal with those other issues, in particular, CBD and the quality it might bring to the table medically. I'm not going to go there with that. Tonight's all about THC. The main psychotropic, mind-altering chemical responsible for the most of the intoxicating effects that people seek is that word, delta nine tetrahydrocannabinol. Yep, you see it, right? That's THC for short. It's a lot easier to say. But that's the chemical we're going to talk about tonight. It's found in a resin produced by the leaves and buds primarily of a female cannabis plant. The plant also contains more than 500 other chemicals, including more than 100 compounds that are chemically related to THC called cannabinoids. Needless to say, marijuana is complicated. There's a lot of parts and pieces. They're tearing it apart. They're gonna try to normalize it, socialize it sometimes, and we can talk about that later, but that's not what we're here about today. When we say marijuana today, this is the picture we conjure up in our minds. This is what my generation in the '70s we saw. That's what they put in our head. But it's not that at all. Nowadays, they're marketing other products. Take a look at them. They all have a little marijuana leaf on them. These are marketing to our kids, much like a lot of other, the marketing that happens with regular products is falling in line with normal. Yeah, cotton candy, candy bars, gummy bears, scary. We hear about incidents all the time that include THC in these items being found with our students at school sometimes. That's scary. It even comes in puffers, inhalers, that look medically prescribed, but they're not. They contain high levels of THC, and that's really what I want to focus on tonight. High levels of THC, the numbers on these pictures are the percentage concentration of THC, okay? These are vape cartridges. We talk about vaping all the time and how dangerous it is to start with. Now they're hiding THC in there and very high levels of it. This is not your parents' marijuana. This is drugs, flat and simple. You can see the potency has changed. From even in the years 2000, the plant potency has increased, but how they extract it now, the potency has dramatically gone up. And even to the point, it's ridiculously high, 98% THC. This is a drug, and it's pure and simple form. You can see what it looks like. It doesn't look like that leaf that you see on the marketing. Doesn't look like gummy bears. This is truly a drug. Without having to read all the different types of extracts and give you the honey oil and hash oil and wax and butter and shatter, all the different types of forms and street names for this terrible substance, but it can deliver an extremely large amount of THC to the body and is associated with ER visits constantly. We see it a lot of times in other avenues. And instead of going through all of this, I wanted to let you hear from somebody who actually sees this in behavior of adolescents every day. I'm going to ask Matt Meyer to come up, if you would, Matt. If you don't know Matt, he's the Director for Insight, Substance Abuse Program for Adolescents. He's also Volunteer of the Year for Forsyth County Schools a couple of years ago. He helped start a program at Gateway, working with the troubled kids that we have in our community. And we found out that a lot of times, he made connections with those kids. So Matt, if you would come up and talk about what you're seeing with the kids that are using this high-potent marijuana THC when they come into your office?
Thank y'all for having me. So as Todd was talking about, I'm going to try to put it in simple terms in what I've seen over the past couple of years, and I'm going to kind of lay a little bit of groundwork. I've been a drug and alcohol abuse counselor for 20 years, working with adolescents and young adults. And I've been the Program Director for Insight, which services mostly youth in North Fulton and Forsyth County, although we do serve the Atlanta metro. And those are probably our two biggest population centers are where we get most of our clients from. And I've been the director there since 2007. Over the past couple of years, I will say two to three years, there's been a huge increase in our under-18 program. So we have a young adult program, it's 18 to 25-year-olds that we treat, and then we treat adolescents, 13 to 17-year-olds. And what I noticed was, let me give you, if y'all can remember, as Tom was talking about marijuana, let's, you can go back to the '90s when I was abusing substances as a teenager, the THC content in marijuana was roughly 4%, right? And now, what kids are coming in with the high-concentrate THC, and most of the time, they're vaping it. That's the most common form. They basically modified their e-cigarettes to put high-concentrate THC, so it's very accessible. And those products typically range in the 80 to 90% THC. And what I've noticed over the past couple of years is, it used to be, when someone started abusing marijuana, if they were like me and they had that kind of addictive trait, it was a kind of a three-degrees-off process, right? Where it took a couple of years of me abusing marijuana before I turned into Spicoli from Fast Time in Richmond High, for anyone that remembers that movie from the eighties, right? And after a couple of years of regular marijuana use, I, you know, had quit sports, was starting to fail school, all the classic things that we associate with someone who's abusing marijuana on a regular basis. But what I noticed with the kids coming in over the past couple of years is they were going 0 to 60 really, really fast. So they were starting off at the deep end of the pool. So I was seeing, you know, 15, 16, 17-year-olds coming to my office where their date of first use of a THC product was usually three to six months prior. And in a period of several months, they went from never having used a THC product to vaping these high-concentrate THC products four, five, six times a day. So that was such a new thing that I was watching develop. And the part that was really scary to me was the effects that that high potency, and there's still, there's not a whole lot of research that's been done yet because this has happened so rapidly, on what effect this has on the adolescent brain. But I can tell you firsthand, up until a couple of years ago, having someone come in with a marijuana abuse problem, they weren't experiencing psychosis, extreme hallucinations. I've had to send several kids to the hospital because they were in a total break from reality exclusively using THC products, sometimes not even that day. I had to go stabilize them before, as a counselor, I could even help them. That was not marijuana even five to 10 years ago. So what we've seen in a very short period of time is a rapid increase in the potency, and the harmful effects are the byproduct of that. And that's what we're dealing with in treating teenagers today. And so there was one other important connection that I wanted to make, and this really speaks to what we're trying to do at Gateway High School currently, is we all are aware of the opiate epidemic. And there were a large number of young adults coming through our program. It's kind of slowed down in the opiate use in our population over the past couple of years, but for five to seven years, we were treating copious amounts of young adults with opiate addictions. And the thing that, the connection that I was making, that I was screaming from every mountaintop, that if you asked any 22-year-old that went through our program with a heroin addiction, what were you doing at 15, 16, 17 years old? 99% of the time, it was smoking marijuana. And that doesn't mean that everybody that abuses marijuana is going to progress into heroin addiction, but certainly, you could see the connection that if they had those addictive traits, that progression was going to happen. And so the concept of having a full-time substance abuse counselor at Gateway, where there is the concentrate of at-risk population in Forsyth County to really get to these kids early that are having substance abuse issues, so we can really affect over the lifespan, as these adolescents turn into adults, hopefully being able to limit or even start to really turn around them from having lifelong addictions. So with that, did you have anything more specific about that? Okay, all right. Thank you for having me. Thank y'all.
So hopefully, he's brought some reality to what's going on in this world. It's slightly changed, and we need to be aware of that as we start hearing about what happens in our schools sometimes. If I could, I want to get Mitch and Drew to come down for a quick second. Matt started the program at Gateway and refined it. We then hired, through some cooperative money that we found, an addiction counselor from Insight to actually work in Gateway and the program that we're starting. And you've heard some of it from Drew, but I'd like them to come share the success of that program, what we're doing there, and their plans to possibly expand it to... what we're doing there, and their plans to possibly expand it to high school.
Hey y'all, I'm Drew.
Hi Drew.
This is Mitch.
We're a roadshow at this point, a little bit, on and off. But basically, the biggest thing that I feel like we've been able to do at Gateway at this point, about 60% of our kids come in, they have a drug or alcohol offense on their campus, which is why they end up, why they end up with us. The use rate is actually significantly higher than that, but that group, that's what got them in trouble, that's why they're with us. When I first was potentially gonna be hired in this job, the first thing I asked Dr. Salom is, what can we do about the drug situation? Like, what are we doing about counseling? Where are we? And that was the first conversation we had, and it sort of led us to where we are today, to a certain degree. I think the biggest thing that we talk about all the time, Dr. Bearden talks about all the time, is that relationship really is the key to getting us anywhere. And the reality is, for teenage kids, who are trying to figure out who they are, that are trying to figure out what it is that they're doing, they need people that they connect with, that they can trust, that they feel like they've got their best interests in mind, and are gonna help guide them down the road that they need to go to. Mitch fulfills that role for us very, very well. The thing that we worry about, is the fact that our normal kid walks in the door, on average, they're about 15 years old, they started, when they started using, when they were about 13 years old. So when you begin talking about this use, you're talking, they've been using for an extended period of time. And when you're talking about marijuana at this concentration, you're talking about potentially that they've moved pretty far down a progression of addiction. I graduated in 1990, you know, people started with a beer. This is like starting with moonshine, right? Same 12 ounces, same thing, in terms of what we're talking about, like for me, that's the best comparison that I can think of. Our goal is to develop a culture where we are, entrusted people, to where kids are encouraging one another, and trying to live a sober life, and realizing that that's the best way for them to live their lives. And to also help the parents, through what it is that it is that they're dealing with over the course of their time, and connecting with resources. Because I tell you, parents come into Gateway typically, they're angry, they're frustrated, they don't know what to do, and in a lot of cases, they didn't know that this was going on before. The thing that I hate about vapes, and I don't use the word hate very often, but I will use it about vapes, is because, again, 1990, somebody was smoking marijuana, you could smell it, you knew it was there, there were things that existed, these dab pens and cards and vapes, somebody can be smoking from Nita to Tom, and you can't smell or realize that that is what it is that they're doing, and it can be marijuana. So it makes it hard to be a parent, and to address these issues. So part of what we're trying to do, is make sure that we're able to take care of those things, as best we can in council, across the board. So I'll let Mitch talk about what he does.
Yep, once again, I'm Mitch, hey guys. Maybe, well, one, everybody already stole all the good information from me. So yeah, I am the Drug and Alcohol Counselor over at Gateway, I go to Forsyth Academy right there in Central as well. And I guess one of the big things that I have noticed, you know, not to be too repetitive, is that, how easy it is, a lot of the kids haven't actually even tried the plant substance itself, right? Like, they're going kinda straight to the carts, because it is, like, you could be walking down the hallway, Johnny's like, hey, here you go, try this, right? And so it's just kinda like that, you're in the mix of it all. One of the big things, and maybe, you know, some of this has been said, that I try to do over there first, is get relationships with kids. Because, you know, a lot of people aren't actually giving real information. Johnny that's passing it to you in the hallway, isn't like, hey, by the way, this is 90% THC, and like, you know, they're like, don't tell your mom, and here you go. And so that's, I think, one of the biggest things that I think of when it comes to this, is a lot of people don't actually know the difference, right? Students and kids. So given a lot of that, like, information on, hey, this could be going on, and honestly, right, when you meet a kid, if that's where the relationship piece comes into play, is if you, I sat down with a kid on the first day of talking to him, and was like, do you know what 90% THC could do to your brain, and blah, 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 and how that, and they're gonna not listen to it at all, right? And so, I guess, yeah, my main concern is, and Matt mentioned it briefly, is a lot of people don't actually know what this can do. It still has the same stigma as smoking weed, but it's very different, you know, just because of the potency. So that would be the last piece, I guess, that I have, to not be on repeat for another 10 minutes, after what everybody else has said. So, yeah.
So I just wanted to bring a name to face y'all heard about, the program and what we're doing over there. We're actually training parents, too. I was, I had the pleasure of meeting with some of the parents, telling stories, talking about this, and how to communicate with their student, and opening their eyes to what we're dealing with here. So it is very informative. I put in a couple of more acute effects of cannabis, and what happens to the brain, what happens to the person, why they end up in the ER. They can have acute situations that come up. And so what's next? We're looking at what we're doing, we're assessing that, we've gone through three years of full-time counselor, we're now looking at what's the next step? How do we expand that to regular high school? Is there a program that other students can benefit from, that we're gaining at Gateway now? Those are the students we don't want to fall through the cracks. So we're definitely increasing our graduation rate, by dealing with this now, versus when they become an adult. So let me, thanks for letting me participate tonight. If you have any questions, you know how to get me. And hopefully you understand some of the questions I ask now, and why I ask them, because it is serious business, this is real serious. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Tom. That was really informative. I know Ms. Light and I had the opportunity to meet Mitch the other day, when he was leaving full circle, and really excited about the work you were doing over there. And we listened to Victoria, and she was really emphasizing the need to get these kids, when they are starting, I don't wanna say lower level of 98% of THC, but she was mentioning that, once they get into the heroin, the success stories of trying to get them off of that is much more difficult. So, the work you're all doing is really important, so. I learned a lot tonight, I didn't know there was female marijuana plants.
Thank you so much. So next, we have Mr. Wes McCall with his update on the Forsyth County Homeless Youth Council.
Yes, I get the opportunity to talk about how we continue to lead and serve in the community, and I need to start by saying two things. One is, on behalf of the council, thank you to the board, for allowing us this opportunity to work together. Before, we'd made a decision to do this, and you guys approved the council, there was not much communication about the homeless youth in Forsyth County. And so, over the last year, we have made some amazing strides, and we're about to show that with you tonight. The other thing is, is I have to say, thank you to Ms. Kim Pluhar, she is simply amazing. And to have a staff member that not only just works so hard, but pours her heart into these students who really need it, has been amazing, and we couldn't do it without her. So, on behalf of the council, and I'm very impressed with her, and thank her for all her hard work and time. So, what we'd like to do, is if you guys remember last January, Ms. Kim came to us and talked to us about the growing homeless youth in Forsyth County. And then, did a really good job, showed us a plan, and then COVID hit. And we didn't have all the resources, but the homeless youth were still in the community. And as a board, we decided to create this council. And so what we're gonna do, is I'm gonna have Kim talk a little bit about the current numbers, and where we're at with that. And then, I'm gonna talk about our goals, show you what we have found with our goals, and then talk about the next steps.
Thank you, it's an honor to serve, and it's an honor to be here to give you an update. We have a growing population, in a year where other school systems are down 30, 20, 40, 50%, we have qualified more students in the homeless education program than last year, the previous year, and the previous year before that. We are currently sitting at 653 students who've qualified for the homeless education program, and you have in front of you a grade level breakdown across FY 18, 19, 20, and 21, to let you see where we're hitting on our stats and our numbers, and where the needs are. I wanted to give you an update on unaccompanied homeless youth, because that is an area that is unprecedented in our community, and a very specific need, some of it ties into what you were just talking about. But we have a number of unaccompanied homeless youth. When I started this job six years ago, we had under 20 students. It wasn't really a need, it wasn't a blip on the radar. We are now at over 110 this school year, and it continues to grow. That was one of the reasons why this council was started, to look at why this population is here. We've talked at the causal roots at other board meetings, I won't reiterate all that right now, but I do wanna talk about the response to the need, and what's happened just from the last time I went with you, till now. We have the Community Youth Liaison, yay! She works with 9th through 12th graders specifically, she's part-time with us, and part-time with the Place of Forsyth, and she does the wraparound needs, and we are so thankful to have her. She actually does life coaching with the students, one-on-one, and we'll get into some of the stats of what she does in a moment. The Place of Forsyth has also opened a cottage, or the cottage, for our females 18 and above. We don't have a place for our boys yet, this is outside of Neglected and Delinquent, because that's a court order, a DFAX placement, and that's under 18. And so there was really no place for our unaccompanied homeless youth to go, besides Atlanta, or Peachtree City. And, or else they were doubling up. So the cottage is a great response to a need that is real and relevant in our community. We also have the Homeless Youth Council, and it has brought together stakeholders from across the community. It has unified our community around a common goal, made the needs very out there and aware across stakeholders. There's been a lot of collaboration that Wes has had with the Chamber of Commerce, and with other places, to really look at the different parts of homeless education, and to address all the different moving pieces, because it's not a single-faceted area, and it's not a quick fix. We also have expanded advocacy and awareness, and collaboration among the schools and stakeholders. And I do believe that the Community Youth Liaison has also upticked some of the referrals we have, and I'm very thankful for Student Information Systems, and our school social workers, our student support team, Dr. Bennett and Karen Ewing, our lead social worker, because they've really helped us identify youth this year. So as far as the wraparounds go, and as far as our high school students go specifically, I have this data in front of you, and every single year, the McKinney-Vento Grant, along with the McKinney-Vento set aside, meets some of the needs, the educational needs of homeless children and youth. This year, our needs assessment was really interesting, for the first time, we had 60% of our students that wanted caps and gowns. I'm able to say and stand in front of you, and say that 30% of our graduating seniors have received financial assistance for caps and gowns. We also have, the next largest request is add credit accrual, not credit recovery, for recovered credit of a failed course, but credit accrual, because students come to us behind on credits. The MV Grant does have money and funding set aside for this. Part of our CARES funding across the LEA is to have credit recovery solutions, and some credit accrual solutions for all students, including homeless children and youth. In addition to that, we'll supplement that for anything that's not met within our school systems, funds for the CARES, for the specific needs of homeless children and youth, through GAVs and other funding sources this summer. So that was an uptick in numbers that we were surprised to see. I think we talked about it at our last meeting, across the board, food has been a larger request than normal. And then, school supplies. For the first time ever, we had to make more backpacks in March. I've never run out of backpacks on the shelves, but school supplies and backpacks, and just the basic needs, have become a lot more needed. And then the one area that we're always looking at how to address, is transportation to school events. Obviously, the McKinney-Vento helps with school stability, we do door-to-door transportation for school stability and school of origin, but we can't go back at 6 o'clock for the chorus event, and we can't bring kids home when it's over at 8:30. And so we do partner with our community nonprofits, like the Place of Forsyth, and our parents can call them and contact them and get some Ubers, but the parents have to do that, and that's an outside referral, and it's not directly from us, it's a referral over to them. As far as the Community Youth Liaison, here is some exciting news to share with you. One of the little snafus with unaccompanied homeless youth, is there are a lot of great things that we can do for them, but one of the things we can't touch, if they don't have a legal parent or guardian, is medical mental health counseling. And so, what we were able to do was wrap life coaching around for our 9th through 12th graders, through the Community Youth Liaison. She meets with our students bimonthly, and she has a monthly theme for life coaching our students. 78% of our students chose to participate in this life coaching session, and it's wonderful to see the progression of that trusted relationship, where they're texting her for real needs, and it takes time. It takes time to build that trust. But they've established it, and they've built it, and now our youth are texting and asking for other things. We also had, you can look, you can see tutoring referrals, getting the tutoring referrals out is easy, and high school getting to participate in is a whole different story. Home visits to deliver beds, pillows, heaters, food, the food referrals themselves, Holiday House and Graduation, FAFSA assistance and applying to college, those are all direct resources and wraparounds, in addition to what the McKinney-Vento program has done, and it's on a consistent basis that they get to talk with the Community Liaison. So that is a win of the year, and a year that has been an uphill battle. It is a huge win, and we're very thankful. We also, based on needs assessment, had a pivot moment at the beginning of the year. 30% of our homeless children and youth were virtual learners, because in their doubled-up situations, if they came face-to-face, they get kicked out. And others had some pretty significant medical issues. And so we had to look, because the failure rate was so much higher between our homeless children and youth, and their non-homeless peers, even among virtual learning. And so in response, we amended the McKinney-Vento Grant, and we implemented two bilingual student success coaches, that meet the needs of students K through 8. Their number one job when they started in October, mid-October, end of October, was to contact every single virtual learner, go to their door, knock, bring a packet if they needed to, make sure that technology's working, and contact those parents. Because we want full participation, we want to remove all the barriers to our homeless children and youth. So that is a win. As our numbers started shifting, kids came back in, and even while that was happening, they began reaching out to all students K through 8. And there's been some wonderful, wonderful innovation that's happened. The data that you have in front of here, isn't really telling you the full picture, because it only represents data collected between the end of October and the end of January. At this point in time, we now have food bags that are specific to our students, and that represent our students. So one of the things we partnered with the Place of Forsyth, is a lot of our bilingual students didn't want our food bags, and they needed food. But because we have a bilingual student success coach who's a native speaker, and we have another bilingual student success coach, and I'm bilingual, we were able to reach out to our students, and we were able to get them food bags that had things in it that they wanted, and that they needed. And now we do home visits, we drop them off, we're where they need us to be. And now our parents are expecting the calls. And one of the things we're gonna talk about in a few minutes, is those trust relationships. And our student success coaches, and our Community Youth Liaison, and our homeless education program has been able to break through the barriers, and form those trust relationships. So we're very thankful for the innovation that's happened this year, and we're very thankful for the support of the board. All right, Wes?
Yes, I want you guys to think about the unaccompanied youth. There's 110 right now that are living out there on their own. They are going to school, they are going to work, they're doing whatever they can on their own. And so, the original vision was working with the school board, trying to figure out what we can do with these students, has really grown to a community event, and a community crisis, I mean, if you're starting to look at some of these numbers. So, one of the things I wanted to share with you is our round table, or our square, or I guess it's a rectangle. But basically, this is who sits around the table with our council. So we have, of course, the Board of Education, and all the staff, and everybody's been great. The Place of Forsyth, Family Promise, Community Connection, which is through the Forsyth County Government, the Sheriff's Office with Lieutenant Garrison, DFAX, the City of Coming, Corner Farms, and the Chamber of Commerce, and Brownsbridge Church. One of the things, when we set these goals, we knew it was going to take some time to get where we needed to go, but it is very complex, as we have found, and I think it's going to take some further steps. So I think the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about what we establish for our needs.
So we have identified five goals in the Homeless Youth Council this year. And the first one was, what is immediate? What can we reach immediately? What's the low-lying fruit? And what are the longer-term goals for sustainability that we need to look at? Immediate, the low-lying, obviously food, housing, technology, life coaching, school supplies, aftercare, scholarships, transportation, counseling, medical, Community Youth Liaison funding. The counseling, we already have the mental health grant, and Karen Ewing is really trailblazing and leading the way with that, we're so thankful, and so is student support. So those were the things that were already established in our community. And then the long-term goals have to do with workforce development. How do we go ahead and help our students learn the soft skills? Because it's really easy to get a job, but it's a totally different thing to keep a job, especially when you've been through trauma, and especially when trusted adults haven't been trusted adults. And so that's part of research out of Chapin Hall, and so workforce development is part of it, safe and stable housing, not just short-term housing, but safe and stable housing for our youth. And then workforce housing, that's something that I know Joni Smith has been leading the charge and working with the city government on, and that's part of the cottage, and we're very thankful to have the cottage established. And then we're looking at mentoring, and expanding mentoring beyond just the Community Youth Liaison, medical assistance, and then Wes has been really looking at the Georgia laws, because we do have some barriers for unaccompanied homeless youth. They really and truly can't access medical care, and they can't access mental health counseling. And so that's something that Wes has been... And so that's something that Wes has been looking at to try and see if there's a state law because we're one of the few states across the nation that don't have something specific for unaccompanied homeless youth. Goal two, from there, we went ahead and we looked at the resources that exist in Forsyth County, in the state of Georgia and at the federal level. And we based it on the core four out of the Chapin Hall National Study of May two thousand and nineteen of social emotional well-being, safe and stable housing, education and employment, and permanent connections. And then we went ahead and plinked in what exists in our community under each of these areas. And then we looked at other resource needs that we have. So we have caps through DFACS that parents can apply for, but we also need to look at after-school scholarships. We need to look at early learning extensions so that our students can have early learning and preschool experiences. Because we have a lot of community-based education referrals and we have a lot of students in Head Start who still qualify for the McKinney-Vento program. We don't track the Head Start students, though. Typical things like we were talking about, the transportation, back-to-school events. The family that called yesterday who was concerned that their child was gonna fail chorus because they didn't have transportation and mom can't drive. We were able to work out a solution, but our families need help with transportation. And then meals, foods, and snacks. I will make one note, we had a Metro Atlanta PLC across liaisons and we did a quick needs assessment. The unaccompanied homeless youth thing, while we have some of the higher numbers, eighty percent of the liaisons surveyed identified that unaccompanied homeless youth housing for students who are in school between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one is a need. A hundred percent of the liaisons said that affordable housing options is a need. So I just wanted to share that with you, too.
And Wes.
So one of the things, we are very blessed to live into a community that has resources and we have organizations. It's just not any of those four organizations focused just on homeless youth. They all have a separate part to it. And so by having the homeless youth council, we were able to bring everybody together and basically take ownership of some of the needs. And so as you can see here, we have Forsyth County Schools that said, hey, they will take ownership of these items. You have Family Promise who is taking ownership of those, the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, the Chamber of Commerce. One of the things that we also realize and we'll get into it with the alignment is that the student population up to about seventeen years old, and you can deal with them one way, but then eighteen to twenty-one, it's a whole different ballgame and a whole different options for them. And so we have to create a way of how we can deal with both of them. And one of the things that the Chamber of Commerce did is they have a need for manufacturer workers, people that have manufacturer skills. Well, the Place of Forsyth has homeless young adults, is what I like to call the eighteen to twenty-one, that are graduated, that don't have a job. So we were able to connect them so that they could train them and the chamber give them jobs. And I thought that was really neat. But then, as we were talking as a council, that these young adults do great at the interviews, do great going to get the job, but then they don't have transportation to get there. And so going through the chamber, again, they were able to work with these manufacturers. And these manufacturers are going to be donating money to the Uber accounts to pay for a certain amount of time for these young adults that go to work for about a month through Uber so they can have their first paycheck and then look at other avenues for cars. So just a great example of how we're just working this out. So we have the Place of Forsyth and then Corner Farms. So goal four was like, how are we gonna support these organizations? And so to be a source to help find space and event, we have the chamber, we have the City of Coming. You know, if we have an organization that needs some kind of space, we can work together with that. To be a communication hub for all things homeless youth, it's never been mentioned before, so we're gonna be that hub. So we all get together and we talk about the homeless youth in Forsyth County. And then provide communication avenues between the organizations, between the businesses and the community. We have the right people sitting around the table that can help with those communication avenues. And then, you know, even working with DFACS and the other government organizations and the, and the justice system is we want to be the community eyes and ears for them, to go to them and say, hey, look, as a council, as all of us together, we are seeing this in the community. And then to help support and engage the wraparound services in our schools. So what's next? We have a couple alignment focus groups that we're going to work on. The first one is to engage, to create an engagement process for the school-aged students, seventeen and under, and the young adults. And we're going to work on this process so that anybody that has, comes in contact with a homeless youth knows what they can do and what their resources are. Not only is this gonna help the school system or the community, it's also gonna help the Sheriff's Department. So they get into a situation where they're dealing with a young adult that's homeless or a student-aged student that's homeless, then they know what resources are next, what the next steps are. So we're gonna create that process. The second one is to align immediate shelter, food, clothing, and transportation, or sorry, transition planning solutions for the age group of fifteen to seventeen. This is the group that is really suffering. This is the group we really need to find resources for. But to do that, we are gonna have to look at different options. We're changing the law. There's a lot of other states around here that have laws that help the homeless youth. And so we're gonna have to work on that. But then once we get that in place, then we can work on, okay, what happens if the Sheriff's Department's out on Central Park at eleven o'clock in the evening? Where can they send this homeless youth? We're gonna find that solution before we're done with this. And then alignment focus three is to align support for wraparound service program. The wraparound service program, I think they'll have an opportunity to share sometime to the board. It's amazing what has come out of that and how they're going to have schools wrap around all these students that are homeless to help them succeed. And then align our communication and updated data with organizations so that we are the one voice showing all the data. It's not just the Forsyth Connection or the school system showing data, it's coming from a one source. And we're gonna continue the conversation in quarterly meetings and then hopefully maybe this time next year, report to you our findings. You wanna close out?
That being said, I want to say thank you. Thank you for approving the resolution. Thank you for supporting homeless children and youth. Our numbers have grown, the needs have grown, they're not gonna go away. Look at our stats for unaccompanied homeless youth, they continue to increase because we've got some real problems, but we've got some real solutions and we've got some great problem solvers. And, you know, we've got a challenge before us, but we're well able. So I want to say thank you all for your support, thank you for what you do to help our students have barriers removed and for full participation. We're truly grateful.
Well, fair enthusiasm. That's really good, very good report, thank you so much. Next up, we have action items, starting with the Code of Conduct for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. All righty.
Doing wonderful. Good evening, guys. Yes, updates on the Code of Conduct. Just to go over our process of this, is we sent out an email in the beginning of the first semester to administrators to recommend that they just go over the Code of Conduct with the LSC, take feedback from the LSC, and give that to us. And we typically give them till the beginning of the second semester to send that in. I have conversations with our office, with our attorneys. And we also are looking for state guidance of what we need to add to our Code of Conduct. And we do this yearly. We take recommendations from parents, we, we look at everything. In this year, we, we don't have a ton of changes to the Code of Conduct. I know you guys had received a copy of it. Page one, again, we, we added Lindsay as, as board members. And we changed my position, I got a new title, Steve Hahn got a new title, and we hired Tara Davis, so she was added to this. And that was on page one. Page eight, we, we did add a word to number five and number six. Number five is disrespectful conduct toward teachers, administrators, or other school personnel. We added the word derogatory within that definition with number six, disrespectful conduct toward other students, school visitors, or persons attending school-related functions. We also added that derogatory word within that definition. The last change we made was just page nineteen, the last page, was the year twenty twenty-one. I don't foresee us making any more changes unless the state comes out and tells us, hey, we need to add this to the Code of Conduct. So at this time, I, I would like to request that Dr. Bearden recommend the board approval of twenty-one, twenty-two school Code of Conduct.
Thank you, David. I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Tom. Second by Darla. Is there any questions or concerns? Pretty minor changes this year.
Yes, ma'am.
Pretty much updating and adding that word derogatory.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, is all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next, we have Apple iMac computers. Mr. Mike Evans.
Very much. Here with Todd Small from our tech services department. And the three items that we're gonna be asking for approval are aligning with our board goals, teach the whole child, as well as efficient and, or effective financial planning.
Yes, we're, we're asking the superintendent to recommend the purchase of a hundred and eighty twenty-seven-inch iMac computers.
Would recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Tom. Second by Lindsay. Questions? All good, all in favor? That's unanimous. Next up again, purchase PCs and monitors for East High, Hendrick School, and ACE.
Yes, sir, we're asking the superintendent to recommend the purchase of six hundred and eighty-eight personal computers, a hundred and fifty-two extra monitors, seven hundred and ninety Acer Chrome boxes and monitors for new schools.
Recommend approval.
Motion by Darla.
Second.
Second by Tom. Questions? All in favor? That's unanimous. And last but not least, middle and high school computer refresh?
And our final one is looking to refresh many of the older labs that we have within our school system as well as replacing some of the central office and school-based general-purpose labs computers. Instead of doing a four-year lease that we've done in the past, since over the years, we've been able to actually reduce the number of desktops that we've had and, and substitute them with Chromebooks, as well as Tim and Todd have done a great job of identifying other options for desktop computers. So we're actually looking at doing a purchase and that'll be purchasing approximately about half of them, which will be saving district money and financing costs also. So at this point, we're asking the superintendent to recommend the purchase of approximately two thousand computers that would replace older aging units.
Recommend approval.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion by Darla, second by Tom. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, Todd, thanks.
Next, we have points of information. Is there anything left?
Nothing else.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel and student educational records per the affidavit?
Still moved.
Motion by Tom, second by Lindsay, all in favor? That's unanimous. That concludes the business portion. We will back for a final vote and that will be all. Thank you.